Great. Welcome, everyone in the council chambers. Before we begin our regular meeting, I'd like to turn to our city attorney for an announcement in open session of the closed session that we just completed.
Thank you, Mayor. As previously announced, the city council went into closed session to discuss three separate items. The city council gave direction. There was no reportable action other than the direction that was provided to us.
Great. Thank you. We can now call to order our city council's regular meeting of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, our six o'clock meeting, and we'll begin with a pledge to the flag, and we are pleased to have Luciana Graham from American Martyrs Campus School here to join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Luciana. Hold on just a moment. I believe you brought with you some representatives of your school. Do you want to introduce them?
This is my teacher, Ms. Bismann.
Thank you.
We are so thrilled to recognize Lulu Graham, an exceptional seventh-grade student who exemplifies what it means to be a well-rounded member of the American Martyrs School community. Lulu's dedication to academic excellence shines through in her consistently outstanding performance across all subject areas, where her intellectual curiosity and strong work ethic set her apart as a true scholar. Beyond the classroom, Lulu demonstrates remarkable commitment to serving others through her involvement with the National Charity League, where she actively participates in community service initiatives that make a real difference in the lives of those around us. Her genuine desire to help others reflects the values we hold so dear at American Martyrs, showing that academic achievement is most meaningful when paired with a servant's heart. As a talented athlete, Lulu brings energy and determination to both her club soccer team and the AMS Cross Country Team. Her athletic pursuits showcase not only her physical abilities, but also her teamwork, perseverance, and sportsmanship, qualities that inspire her teammates and her coaches alike. What really truly sets Lulu apart, however, is her warm and generous spirit. Whether offering to help a classmate understand a challenging concept, volunteering to assist teachers with classroom tasks, or simply sharing an encouraging word with someone who needs it, Lulu consistently demonstrates a willingness to lend a helping hand to any and all members of our school community. Her positive personality brightens our hallways and our classrooms, making American Martyrs a better place for everyone. Lulu Graham represents the very best of our school's mission, a student who pursues excellence in service, academics, and extracurricular activities while maintaining the kindness and humility that define true leadership. We are so proud to have her as part of our AMS family.
That's terrific. Now, is there anybody else in the council chambers that you might want to recognize who accompanied you tonight?
My mom and my dad.
Fantastic. So, what I'd like to do is, on behalf of the entire city council, my colleagues, before we take a photo with you, we have an accommodation for leading us in the pledge, and, drumroll, a city pin for you and for your teacher.
Thank you.
Let my colleagues come down.
You want us to volunteer, right?
I'm her mom.
One for mom and dad.
Is the chairman?
First, that way.
And then one more right here.
Thank you so much.
You didn't want to stand?
Davis, trying to take chairs again.
All right. So, we'll now move on to a roll call, please.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Here.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Here.
Councilmember Haworth?
Here.
Mayor Protam Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Lesser?
Here. Now, move on to our ceremonial calendar, and maybe we'll start this way. This is, ceremonial calendar is, a presentation of commendation to the Manhattan Beach Rotary Club in honor of seventy-five years, let's do it one more time, seventy-five years of service. And I'd like to start this way. Service above self. That's the motto of Rotary International, and the service to Manhattan Beach over seventy-five years at the Manhattan Beach Rotary Club has been substantial. I could go through a list. On their website, there's just a, you know, sort of a thumbnail sketch of what sorts of service projects they're doing now. Go ahead and enter Manhattan Beach Rotary Club projects in ChatGPT, and it goes on for pages and pages and pages. For now, at least two, three generations of service projects. I'm going to just touch the surface, and then we're going to have some representative of the club to come down. Scholarships, Miracosta High School, El Camino College, Project Carazón, Tijuana to Build Homes, polio vaccination, Meals on Wheels, Manhattan Beach Botanical Garden that they've helped fund, inner club, Sister City Club initiatives, Miracosta Gradite, cancer screening in India, which is part of a Rotary International project, vocational and youth service awards, I'm just on page one, computer recycling, literacy reading programs, water and sanitation programs, veterans first responders acknowledgements like Vet Fest, which we recently celebrated in its sixth annual iteration, a vision to learn and vision projects, senior holiday lunch, friendship circle, projects that we know of and some that we don't know of. Rotary Club volunteers helping with those that need help with home projects because they might be disabled or have financial need. Rotary is there. We are so grateful as a community to have Rotary here, helping us. It's been a focal point for our community and a significant source of public service. All of us want to celebrate the seventy-fifth anniversary. I'm pleased to see the president of Rotary, Manhattan Beach Rotary, this year, Cedric Tuck Sherman, whom I've known just as an example of how engaged all the members are in the community for over fifteen years through our kids. It is my privilege to invite Cedric down on behalf of Manhattan Beach Rotary. Mr. President, thank you. Please, tell us a little bit about what Rotary has been doing, maybe how you came to be involved with Rotary first, and anything else you'd want to add about the seventy-fifth anniversary?
So, thank you. First of all, thank you, David. This is a great honor for us. I just came to learn this evening from Paul, our past, we have about twelve, I think thirteen Rotarians here in the audience today, including several past presidents, that we actually celebrated the Manhattan Beach seventy-fifth anniversary with a dinner honoring the council members at the time. Anything else to say about that, Paul?
No, it was a full gala with a ball and dance and everything. Everybody in Texas.
Right. So, if you could just let us know the date for our gala. But Rotary is, first of all, Rotary is the largest service organization in the world, and District 5280, which comprises the majority of LA, has over seventy clubs. And I can tell you that Manhattan Beach is one of, if not the, most thriving clubs in our district. And I think that is a reflection, really, on the community that we serve. We have one hundred and eighteen members. We've added twelve this year alone. We will be giving out more than $200,000 in program donations and scholarships. And thank you for reading out a list of some of those projects. We also support many, if not most, of our community projects. So whether it's Leadership Manhattan Beach, whether it's the Jimmy Miller Fund, whether it's PSI Love You, whether it's the Roundhouse, and any nonprofit organizations or service organizations in this community need our support, we have their back. We're there to serve them. I joined Rotary eight years ago, in large part because before that I was very active in the Boy Scouts here at Troop Eight Four Nine. And once my son eagled out, I thought, I need to have something to do with my time. And so, I joined Rotary, and I never looked back. Rotary's become not only a place to give back, but also it's become a second family to me. So, I, we have met several former city council members, and the doors open. We invite all of you to join us.
If anyone watching this tonight is interested in learning more about Rotary, what would you encourage them to do?
Well, as you mentioned, if you could just Google your ChatGPT, but our website is mbrotary.org, and that'll take you to our site. We have all of our contact information there for all our officers, as well as our meeting location. And we have open door in terms of having guests who may be interested in joining come and sit on a couple of meetings, see if they like it.
Before we take photos, can I have those that are in the Rotary just stand up or just raise a hand who are here tonight? Thank you for being here, and thank you for your service. With that, we have a city scroll, and something to join your Rotary pin, a city pin, and I think all of us would like to take a picture with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I can't tell you.
You'd have to join.
He's on his way. He's been a few days.
Okay. Thank you all. We now move on to approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinance. This would also be an opportunity for members of the council to indicate items they wish to pull from the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I see a motion by Mayor Protam Franklin. The motion is?
Oh, approval of the agenda.
And I see a second by Councilmember Sherillian. Call for the vote, please.
Motion passes five zero.
Very good. We now move on to city council and community organization announcements of upcoming events for one minute per person. Any member of the public care to come down and make an announcement in chambers?
Good evening, Council Kelly Strowman, Executive Director for the Downtown Manhattan Beach Business and Professional Association. This time tomorrow night, downtown will be abuzz with all sorts of festivities, lights, entertainment, Santa, and amazing things. And then at seven PM, Mr. Mayor, you get to flip that switch and light up the pier.
I may get a little help, but we'll save that as a surprise.
Okay. We will take that at any given time. I do want to give a shout out to Public Works. They have been, and Parks and Rec, everybody has been working tirelessly, rain, no rain, rain, no rain, to get the trees on the pier, get everything wired, and do everything else in town that is going to make that evening so special. You guys kept looking. I thought maybe Santa was coming up behind me. I was like, what is going on? Anyways, there's a few other things that, so tomorrow night starts five PM, Santa arrives in Metlocks and all the kids festivities, and then the stores are open from six to nine to greet everybody. There is a window, the annual window decorating contest you can see here. If you scan the QR code, it will tell you where to find that. I did leave outside, up top, and then at the desk upstairs, the scavenger hunt card and the window decorating card for everybody to pick up and participate in. The scavenger hunt card, both the hunt and the window decorating goes through November thirtieth. So kiddos and families have two weekends to find Buddy the Elf hiding in all sorts of places around town. Once they're done, they get to, they get to hand in their card and enter a drawing to win a buddy and a gift card from these participating locations. And then last but not least, I want, this is the Santa photos. Tomorrow night in Metlocks from five PM till nine PM at least, Santa and the sleigh will be there. Carl Meyer Photography will be on hand taking photos that are free. They'll go to a Flickr site where people can download them and enjoy their holiday photos. So, thank you, everybody, all of you, for your support in this magnificent event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council. My name is Michael Hudek, Recreation Supervisor here with the city, and I too am here to announce a couple of community events. In addition to the pier lighting and holiday open house, I also want to invite everyone out to our pickleball tournament. It's going to be the weekend after Thanksgiving, so not this weekend, but the following weekend. We'll have a hundred and fifty, two hundred pickleballers coming out and having a great time. So, registration closes for that next Monday. So, sign on up. I know Councilman Sherillian has been working really hard, he's been training, and he will be out there to defend the council's honor and everything else. So, any questions for me? All right. Hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Cassandra Sargent from the Manhattan Beach Public Library. I'm just here to talk about two events that we have upcoming. One is Saturday, and it's an all-ages bingo, and we will be having prizes. And then the following Tuesday at five thirty, adults can make a pressed flower luminary jar. And if you are celebrating Thanksgiving, it would look beautiful on your centerpieces.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam, city council members, city officials, Ted, Bobby Bell, WM, outreach and educator for recycling and organics. Just giving you guys a quick heads up. Thanksgiving coming up next week. If your service is on Thursday, it'll get pushed to Friday. Friday gets pushed to Saturday, and then we will be all caught up by that point. Post number two here, just across the way in Torrance, we had another hotload truck fire. It is no good. We have to call the fire department. They tell us where to park. The fire department gets there, then we dump everything we collected on the street, makes a giant mess. The fire department then puts us out for us, then we scoop it back out. The problem is, now that truck doesn't get to finish its route, we have to find someone else to come finish this route. This one was caused by an electric scooter. Nothing with a battery. Please, nothing with a battery ever put into any trash bin. We have plenty of collection sites. You can call me. I'll be happy to come pick it up for me personally. And to leave you guys with a smile, this next one was a little raccoon that jumped on the back of one of our trucks, and our driver got flagged down. They stopped him. He went underneath the tree, and that little guy jumped off and got into the tree, and all was good. Wishing you guys a happy Thanksgiving and all God's blessings.
Thank you. Any other members of the council chamber that would like to make a community announcement of up to one minute? Seeing none and no more in chambers. Martha, anybody on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay. Counsel, any community announcement?
I have a public comment. Should I wait? I mean, I could do it in a minute, though.
Okay. Up to you.
I'll do it. So, I just, I'm.
Is your mic on, though?
Can you not hear me? Can you hear me? I'm endeavoring to do a better job at reporting out. So, I was going to talk about going to the Downtown Business and Professional Association. Would you rather me wait? Because I can.
Up to you.
Okay. Sorry to, for severate. Anyway, my council assignment has to be the Downtown Business and Professional Association, and they met last Thursday. It's, you know, it's restaurant owners, it's retailers, there's also realtors, et cetera, most of whom are residents. It's not some, you know, monolithic business group. It's mostly residents as well. And our comm dev department came and presented our parking, not our Pulse, they did the Downtown Pulse, you know, the opinions on what should go into parking lot three. So, those, that audience got to participate in that, and I thought that was very helpful. And, you know, we are constantly in contact with our small businesses in the community, whether through the liaison that I, you know, council has with the Downtown Business Association through the chamber, and then our staff is actually constantly in contact with them. We know it's really tough out there to have a small business, whatever it is, and you make our community great. So, I just wanted to give a report that we do attend these things. So, thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, any other colleagues that would have a announcement? If not, we'll open the floor to public comment. Any member of the public, I'm sorry. I cannot hear you. I'm sorry. Coffee with the mayor. I was going to save this perhaps for the next council meeting, but following a long tradition, and I do see a former colleague in the audience. Hello, former councilmember Mayor Richard Montgomery. I am hosting coffees with me, where we can talk about any issue of interest to residents. And I held one last month. They were held on the first Friday of the month. About eight to twelve people came. We had a robust conversation about various city issues. I enjoyed it, and some threatened to come back and return to future coffees. I will, all members of the public. These are going to be held, at least initially, from nine AM to ten AM, again, on the first Friday of the month. This time, it's going to be December fifth, in Metlocks Plaza. And early in the new year, we're going to be moving to East Manhattan Beach. But please, come, grab your beverage of choice, and meet us right in the center of the plaza, Metlocks Plaza, first Fridays of the month, nine AM to ten AM. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder, Martha.
Is it free drinks? Or feel free?
Feel free to bring a drink of your choice.
So, you're not paying.
A drink of our choice. Bring your own coffee.
I heard that Mayor Protam was going to be sponsoring. No? Okay. We now move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for speakers to provide public comments on any item that's within the subject-mannered jurisdiction of the city, including items on this agenda for up to three minutes. Are there members of the public in chambers that would care to offer public comment at this time? If so, please come down to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Oliver Stern. I'm a junior at Miracosta and the son of a third-grade teacher in MBUSD. I'm here for one reason, to help our city create homes for the people who teach and support Manhattan Beach students every day. Our teachers and school staff are the backbone of this community. They shape our kids, they run our campuses, and many of them cannot afford to live anywhere near here. If we want stable classrooms, strong programs, and great outcomes, we have to make it possible for educators to put down roots. Our target is clear. Manhattan Beach must plan for seven hundred and seventy-four homes this cycle, including substantial, very low, and moderate-income units. Let's make a good chunk of those units for the people who already serve our community. On my site, mbforteachers.com, I show that most local public school teachers and staff qualify for low or moderate-income housing. These are the coaches, classroom aides, and teachers that we see every day. If we want to keep them here, we should build for them here. State law now gives us a direct path. AB 2295 allows housing on school-owned property as allowable use, with objective standards, a minimum of ten units, and long-term affordability, and priority for school employees. Other districts are moving. San Diego Unified just set goals to build educator housing on district land, including policies to deliver roughly a thousand income-restricted apartments across multiple sites. If large districts can do that, Manhattan Beach can pilot one great site and lead our scale. Here's my ask for tonight. First, please direct city staff to form working group with MBUSD and bring back a study or using Robinson Elementary as the pilot site under AB 2295. Robinson is a district-controlled and logical place to test this idea. I understand that some of Robinson's classrooms are not full. If needed, students could be absorbed into the other elementary schools without overcrowding. Consolidating would save the district money, and that could be used to redirect into building educator housing that helps us recruit and keep great people. Third, set up a simple MOU between the city and MBUSD. An MOU is just a short agreement that says what the shared goal is, who does what, and on what timeline. It is not a complicated contract. It is a commitment to work together. Let's actually get moving. Do a study, hold a real community workshops, and put out a public calls for proposal. If we do this right, Robinson can be the model for shared public use in educator housing that counts towards our state housing goals and keeps the heart of our community right here. Let's build homes for the people who make Manhattan Beach Manhattan Beach. If San Diego can move first, Manhattan Beach can make it smarter, can do it smarter, and with our values, small-scale, great design, and homes for the people who teach our kids. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would care to address council for up to three minutes for public comment? Seeing none. Martha, is anybody on Zoom that would like to speak?
No request on Zoom.
Okay. In which case, I will close public comment, and we'll move on now to our.
Excuse me, Mayor, could I make a public comment?
You may. I'm here for time. I know that you want to speak.
Thank you. Like Councilmember Haworth, I really didn't know where to put this. But I had the pleasure of attending with the Los Angeles World Affairs Council on November fifth, a presentation by Los Angeles County District Attorney Nathan Hockman on the occasion of his first year in office. And I supported, you know, Mr. Hockman, in full disclosure. I contributed to his campaign because I saw him as a way out from where we, as a council at that time, from 2020, wherein George Gascon was elected, through the years, councilmember, former councilmember Richard Montgomery there, led a team to try to get our own prosecuting attorney for misdemeanor crimes. Because one week into his term, George Gascon had presented directives that the voters had not voted on, that he was not really legally allowed to do, but he had directives on what kind of crimes he was going to go ahead and pursue, what kind of punishments that he was going to pursue. And you saw crime uptick in, during those four years. We tried three times to make an agreement with Redondo Beach to use their attorney, their city attorney, to prosecute our misdemeanor crimes, required the permission of George Gascon. It didn't happen. We always exhort you to vote, okay? And I'm so proud of the city of Manhattan Beach, because we overwhelmingly, by a seventy to thirty margin, our residents and then the residents of the county voted in Nathan Hockman. And the difference you see now, after a year being in there, is that he fully restored the deputy district attorney staff. Four hundred of them left the Gascon during Gascon. So, he's got those back to where there are about seven hundred deputy district attorneys now. His philosophy is the hard middle, to make criminals, convicted criminals accountable and responsible for their crimes. And he gives them a choice. You can go into diversion, or you can go to jail. And as a result, along with our great police department here, who before were chasing the same criminals time and time again. We call it the catch-and-release, catch-and-release. I think the world record in Manhattan Beach was three times in the same day, the same criminal, because Gascon refused to prosecute. So, your vote is important. We've got a lot of participation from the city of Manhattan Beach. We're seeing results. He's very open. You can talk to him. Go visit, go visit the office. Go ask any question. And I just want to congratulate you again. Vote, vote, vote. And the same thing with Prop 36. So, that was a tool that was needed in order to prosecute these crimes. So, Manhattan Beach did a great job, sixty, forty percent margin of passing Prop 36, and of course, it passed statewide. So, just wanted to show you the concrete results of your voting. So, thank you.
Any other comments by colleagues? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number H, the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilmember Haworth. The motion is?
Approved consent calendar.
Seconded by Councilmember Tarnay. Call for the vote.
Motion passes five zero.
No items removed from the consent calendar, so we'll move on to public hearings, the first of which is to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending sections of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code and the Manhattan Beach Local Coastal Program related to the long-term outdoor dining program development.
Good evening, Mayor Lesser and members of the city council. Yeah, Senior Planner Jay He Yoon will be presenting this item tonight. She's been the project manager for this project and taken it through the comprehensive efforts that have brought you this draft changes to the ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, and city council members. I'm Jay He Yoon, Senior Planner. The item before you is to consider code amendments related to the city's long-term outdoor dining program development. Before I begin, I wanted to note that this work-plan effort stemmed from COVID-19 that changed not only the people's perspective, but also the dining landscape in general, in ways that we didn't imagine before. And in order to capture the benefits of outdoor dining while addressing the pitfalls we've experienced during the temporary program, the city's outdoor dining task force, staff, and numerous members of the public came together to work in collaboration to develop --
related to the city's long-term outdoor dining program development. Before I begin, I wanted to note that this work-plan effort stemmed from COVID-19 that changed not only the people's perspective, but also the dining landscape in general, in ways that we didn't imagine before. And in order to capture the benefits of outdoor dining while addressing the pitfalls we've experienced during the temporary program, the city's Outdoor Dining Task Force, staff, and numerous members of the public came together to work in collaboration to develop a program that could potentially balance all the various needs and interests of the community. So we're finally reaching the end of this journey with two-plus years of work behind us. And for that, I'd like to thank everyone that's been involved throughout the process for their patience and input. The contents of the presentation will provide you with background information on how the project has evolved over the past few years that led to the current proposed amendments related to sidewalk dining, private property outdoor dining, and commercial vehicle loading provisions. After going through more details on each of the amendments, we'll transition into potentially establishing a tiered sidewalk dining use fee and also adopting outdoor dining guidelines that have been derived from the proposed ordinance. As way of background, in June 2020, the city's temporary outdoor dining program began in response to COVID-19 restrictions on indoor operations. And by August 2021, the City Council directed staff to pursue work-plan items to seek a long-term solution as the focus gradually shifted to what could be in a post-pandemic era. In February 2023, the city's temporary outdoor dining program came to an end. And shortly after, the city's outdoor dining task force meetings kicked off, with 15 meetings conducted. During the course of the program development, there were two community workshops. The first was held in October 2023. And between September 2023 and March 2025, five status update reports were presented before the City Council. That included task force recommendations, the preferred program vision, a potential pilot project to test out the preferred program vision, preliminary plans of the preferred program vision, and code amendment initiation. For context, the preferred program vision consisted of sidewalk widening, reconfiguring on-street parking spaces, and public flex-based improvements in downtown and North Manhattan Beach. While the preferred program vision as a whole didn't receive the support to be further developed into construction documents, the sidewalk widening and public flex-based improvements have become separate capital improvement program projects for future consideration. The second community workshop was held in January of this year. And following the City Council's direction to initiate code amendments, in April, the Parking and Public Improvements Commission reviewed the draft ordinance with a focus on sidewalk dining and vehicle loading. In May, the Planning Commission conducted a study session to review the draft ordinance. And after conducting two public hearings, the Planning Commission recommending adoption of the proposed amendments related to private property outdoor dining. The purpose of the proposed amendments is to supplement and revise the existing chapters of the Municipal Code and Local Coastal Program with a focus on operational standards. For example, it includes allowing a net increase in occupancy, serving alcohol in outdoor dining areas, better regulating parking, music, and live outdoor entertainment, and also establishing an enforcement and revocation mechanism. Specifically, the amendments target these three chapters or sections where sidewalk dining is contained in Chapter 7.36. Private property outdoor dining is governed by the Outdoor Facilities Section of the Code, and commercial vehicle loading in Chapter 14, the city's traffic code. Both sidewalk dining and outdoor facilities permits are issued by the Planning Division after going through interdepartmental reviews. And while commercial vehicle loading wasn't a central part of the program development from the beginning, it was included per the City Council's direction, so we may start considering how to better regulate these activities, given that it was a concern repeatedly heard from the residential community during various outreach efforts. We'll go into more details on each of the amendments in this order. And due to the amount of information being presented, a Q&amp;A slide has been inserted after each topic to provide you with opportunities to ask questions as we go. The sidewalk dining ordinance specifies in terms of location that it would be limited to downtown and North Manhattan Beach only. And sidewalk dining area must be adjacent to the business and cannot go beyond the business's frontage. Also, it specifies that the director will be authorized to condition or modify the requirements to provide more flexibility in applying the provisions based on the PPIC's recommendation. Unobstructed sidewalk width would be increased from 48 to 60 inches in order to provide greater clearance for pedestrians. And sidewalk dining-related objects will allow for tables and chairs by right. And umbrellas, heaters, busing stations, et cetera, will be allowed under the same permit, but with further scrutiny. And because of the slight ambiguity in how this has been drafted in the current ordinance, staff is proposing modified language that will be presented at the end of this presentation for your consideration. And as part of this provision, we are prohibiting any objects that may cause traffic safety and coastal view impairments in the right-of-way. Alcohol service in sidewalk dining areas would be allowed with a use permit per the PPIC's input. It was initially drafted to not require a use permit to be consistent with state bills that have provided the alcohol relief and also be consistent with task force recommendations to streamline the process. The state bill referenced here is AB 592 that further extends the previous bill, AB 1217, for establishments that have a temporary catering authorization from the State Alcoholic Beverage Control, where they can serve alcohol without any discretionary reviews until January 2029. Without ABC's authorization, they will be subject to the city's use permit provision here. Music and live outdoor entertainment will continue to be prohibited, but allowed no more than twice a year for special events, utilizing the city's existing amplified sound permit. And code compliance with Building, Fire, Zoning, and Other Regulations would be required, including the newly established enforcement mechanism, where after three violations within a one-year period from the first violation, the permit would be revoked, and the permitty would not be able to reapply for one full year. In terms of occupancy, a net increase would be allowed as long as there is an adequately-sized trash enclosure and service levels at the premises, which would be reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department. And parking requirements would need to comply with the city's parking code. However, as an alternative, bicycle parking can be provided instead with a 1:5 ratio, meaning that for each off-street parking space required for the sidewalk dining area, five bicycle parking spaces can be provided instead. And the previously mentioned AB 592 also includes a parking relief associated with expanded outdoor dining areas created due to COVID, where no additional parking requirements will be imposed for those indefinitely. Lastly, several provisions are included that codify existing practices, such as no queuing with outdoor dining tables and chairs, limited seating capacity for sidewalks that are 9.5 feet or less in width, and operations per plan to match the placement and quantity of tables and chairs for ease of enforcement. And the permit renewal date would be on March 1st of each year to be consistent with the private property outdoor dining regulations in place. We'll pause here for any questions you may have regarding the sidewalk dining ordinance, and afterwards, we'll go into private property outdoor dining regulations.
Great. Thank you. Colleagues, questions at this point? Let's see, Councilmember Haworth, all thumbs.
Funny. Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. I was, I'm a little confused with the alcohol service. So AB 592 extends until January 2029. So if a restaurant was already operating with that.
Temporary catering authorization, they may do so until January 2029.
And how many of those do we have? Do we, I mean, rough, I mean.
All of the ones that are operating with serving alcohol in sidewalk dining areas.
Okay, so all the ones. And then if there was some, there was a question. I thought, you know, a valid question submitted. I think we all got it in an email about, you know, allowing flexibility instead of just they have to be adjacent to, like, the wall of the restaurant. Maybe they could go out and be on the curb. Is there, I think I understand that there's some maybe prohibition. If ABC's granted a license, they can't, it has to be adjacent to the restaurant? Like, they can't cross the sidewalk then to serve the alcohol? Is that, am I capturing that right? Because I, I'm trying to capture why we wouldn't just allow alcohol past the 2029 deadline. Maybe I'm not asking a question.
Thank you, Councilmember Haworth, for the question. I'll break that into a couple of different pieces, but.
Conflating a bunch.
The current code does not allow for alcohol service with sidewalk dining. So Title VII, which.
In our code.
Title VII of our municipal code, which is the governing regulation for sidewalk dining, does not allow for alcohol service as a part of sidewalk dining permits. So in order to change that from a municipal level, we would have to amend this code section. Right now, the restaurants that are operating with alcohol service are doing so under the temporary state provision, which sunsets at this point in 2029, but we don't know what will happen after 2029. So particularly, if we're, pursuant to the recommendation of the Planning Commission, where they're recommending for someone to get a use permit, in order to codify that, we also have to allow it to begin with in our code.
Right.
So we would have to amend the code to allow for alcohol service as a part of the sidewalk dining, and then subsequently to require a use permit for it.
And that.
That's actually two code amendments, one in Title VII and one in Title X.
Okay, and luckily, we have somebody here who really knows the code. I'm not, not, I mean, wait, whoa, you know what I hope, please. But also, I thought there was something with the ABC about how they serve, about the serving of alcohol and the coordinating up. And so that's where I was maybe getting a little confused. And so maybe.
Yes, yes. Typically, there is a requirement from the State Alcoholic Beverage Control that requires some kind of barrier to delineate the licensed and unlicensed area for public safety reasons. And currently, during the temporary program, I don't, it wasn't imposed the way that it regularly does. But moving forward, that is a possibility. We're looking out for any new guidance from ABC.
Okay.
And in order to have the delineated areas closer to the establishments makes a lot more sense than having it in a separate area where the service has to cross over with the alcohol in an unlicensed area.
Okay. So that's what I was trying, that was the question, the answer I was trying to understand. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Franklin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. On Slide 9. So where it says umbrellas, heaters, busing station, et cetera, allowed with permits. I've just been trying to go through my mind. Where do we have examples of any of these? Where they have, like, maybe a busing station, umbrellas, I understand, but heaters?
These are more common features that we witnessed during the temporary outdoor dining program. And because we have significantly less applicants that have applied for sidewalk dining permits that are active, we don't see this as often nowadays. But in the future, if it does become an active permit where people participate, we wanted to anticipate other objects that might be proposed and review accordingly.
Okay, good. That makes sense. And just to be clear, it's the extension out from the outer wall of the restaurant?
Yes.
They can't be off of the curb and come in. It has to be on the restaurant side and go out.
Yes, immediately adjacent to the establishment.
Okay. And how about, so adjacent to the establishment. So if you have a table for two, so you've got the restaurant wall, you've got the, you've got the table, you've got a chair and a chair, could there be a third chair that's actually on the sidewalk?
As long as they can provide that 60-inch clearance outside of that third street into the curb of the sidewalk, that would be allowed.
Okay, gotcha. But what's the likelihood of that, given our, I mean, our sidewalks are uniform, but they're all uniformly narrow?
They're narrow in the sense that, yes, they are all uniformly narrow, but they have different sidewalk width. At the top of my head, I don't know the variables, but North Manhattan Beach has narrower sidewalks in general compared to downtown.
Okay. And what's our definition of a sidewalk? I know that we have tiles or mock tiles. I can't believe that. I guess they're actual tiles, the, what are they, darker, darker blue? You know, so you've got concrete, the tiles, and then you've got concrete meter curb. So what is the sidewalk?
I would like to defer this to Eric, since he would have the exact definition, but. Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Eric Ampley, the City Traffic Engineer. The sidewalk is defined as the paved area between the curb and the property line. The unpaved areas are considered landscaping or parkways. So it's any of that area would be considered sidewalk.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you just define that again? I was trying to find a picture of it.
Oh, okay. A sidewalk is any paved area between the curb face and the property line of the.
Even if there's a tree or a.
Like I said, if there's a landscaped area, it's not sidewalk.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Tarnay.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I just have a question. With the expansion of, I think that was on that slide still, from 48 inches to 60 inches, are there currently businesses that this change would now make it so that they can't do the outdoor dining?
This is actually something that has been current practice for the past couple of years.
Okay.
So it's been a requirement. We just haven't been able to codify it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, just visually, I was trying to figure out if this would eliminate people's ability to have sidewalk dining. And then, can you walk me through the alternative parking requirement? If somebody meets it by adding bike racks? Like, who adds the bike racks? Where does it go?
It would be the permitty, and it would have to be on the premises, just as any off-street parking spaces are provided by the applicant. If they do not have the space to accommodate it, maybe they can consider a joint agreement with another property to use that space to provide the parking spaces or the bicycle parking spaces instead.
And if we had, if the city had plans to increase our, just as a matter of our planning in the future, would any of the restaurants be able to use that, the increase in that number to satisfy their parking requirement?
Yes, because the parking provision says that it would comply with the city's parking code. If the parking code had a provision that allows sidewalk dining to accommodate parking in those areas, it would be able to be applied.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good. Jayhee, thank you for your report. And also, thank you for your staff's support for the Outdoor Dining Task Force. This has been a long endeavor, and you were the principal staff person that worked with them. Thank you. Let's start with, my questions have to do with criteria that staff would apply in granting permits, presuming this ordinance is adopted. And I guess I have a concern as a parent who used to push a double stroller through town when my kids were young. So I'm concerned about better understanding the width, the minimum width, and whether it would fit a double stroller, because many have not doubled, and at least a single, and the grade. I'm wondering, how does staff look at the grade of a sidewalk? Because I'm not sure if I saw something express. I think it's there, but I think it needs to be articulated if a restaurant is proposing outdoor dining, where there's somewhat of a steep grade on certain of our streets.
Because we added a provision where other applicable codes, whether it's building, fire, safety, and zoning needs to be complied with, all sidewalk dining permits that come into the city are routed to building and safety, as well as traffic and other divisions, to ensure that they comply with the minimum safety standards as well. So if it is a sloped street, or if they cannot accommodate the clearance necessary to meet the ADA requirements or so, or whatnot, we will work with the applicant to see if there is a solution that we can reach. Unfortunately, if there is no simple solution, then it wouldn't be something we can accommodate. But we will go through the parameters of the code that we need to comply with to make sure that we can get the sidewalk dining permits issued or advise them on other avenues that they can see, such as private property outdoor dining.
So how to characterize that? Is it a subjective standard? Or is it a multiple criterias that go into the final determination? If we can't articulate specific standards tonight, how would you characterize?
It would be objective. Most of the building and safety or fire codes are very objective standards, where it's black and white.
Thank you for that. I want to better understand potential parking challenges. I want to better understand potential parking challenges and intensification of our downtown that we might find to the extent that we're relaxing our occupancy standards by allowing more outdoor dining. This was a discussion certainly when we explored long-term solutions to address the temporary decks. How would you describe what level of intensification and what additional parking challenges we might find, and we'll have a follow-up question on that, too.
Sure, that is a great question. During the temporary program, we didn't require any parking requirements for the expanded areas, and at that time, we were actually taking out 57, 58 on-street parking spaces. And with the intensification of the increased occupancy, we were still able to function and operate as a city and actually gain more revenue from the loss of parking with the gain in sales from the restaurant business. And currently, for the past three years or so after the temporary program ended, historically, we processed probably 13 to 15 sidewalk dining permits, and because they're limited in scope, size, and operating hours, we didn't really encounter a lot of parking issues as far as I'm concerned. And with the new parking code requirement that we will be imposing, I think it would be an enhancement to providing more parking opportunities and accommodating those increased occupancies.
Talk about the credit, as I call it, for bike parking, and that being an alternative to providing, why don't I let you describe it so I get the nomenclature right?
Off-street parking spaces.
Where could that parking be? Because the whole point of this is to allow outdoor dining on the sidewalk, so where could that restaurant potentially allow bicycle parking that would be credited?
It would be a case-by-case basis since the layout of the restaurant, the private property, the negotiations that they might have with other property owners might be different. And for bicycle parking, there is the flexibility that it can be in multiple different locations, pockets of the private property, or areas that can be utilized versus an off-street parking space has to be a certain dimension in one huge chunk of the area.
I'm just trying to think of the implications of what that might mean. Maybe I'll just quickly ask our traffic engineer, am I just imagining that this could have large ramifications, or is this-
With regard to bicycle parking, or with regard to additional parking demand?
So let's talk about both, bicycle for starters.
Let's start with bicycle parking. So this provision allows for one parking place to be replaced, one parking space requirement to be replaced by five bicycle parking spaces. This gives the restaurant or business added flexibility, they may have extra space on the property that's not being used by the building, but it's not big enough for an actual parking space and to create a driveway for it. There's some restaurants in the North Manhattan Beach area that have a little bit of extra frontage of private property behind the sidewalk that they could use for bicycle parking, and that's perfect. Bicycle parking works hand-in-hand with outdoor dining because when the weather's good, you're going to want a bicycle, you're, and you're going to want to be in the outdoor dining area. When it's raining, you're not necessarily going to have that occupied by people in sitting in the rain, so it works hand-in-hand, gives a little extra flexibility. Not every restaurant, not every business is going to be able to take advantage of that.
Cool, thank you. Leave it at that, I know a lot of the time. Another question we received is council related to noise, cumulative noise standard, particularly 15 feet away. Can you explore or just explain the sort of attention that the Outdoor Dining Task Force gave to this and staff has given to this to better understand what this might mean for downtown residents?
Yes. The 15-feet buffer actually applies to the private property outdoor dining regulations, particularly to the second, third-floor outdoor dining areas. But how that 15 feet occurred is we looked at each and every property in downtown and North Manhattan Beach, that's zone commercial, and looked at the depth of the lots from the main commercial corridor, whether it's Manhattan Beach Boulevard, Manhattan Avenue, Highland Avenue, and the minimum depth of those lots was 30 feet. And taking 50% of that as the buffer led us to that 15-feet setback, and we came to the conclusion that, looking at other jurisdictions such as Santa Monica that has a flat buffer of 15 feet, and it's working well for them, and knowing that at least you need 15 feet to operate in outdoor dining area, that was, that was how we came to the conclusion. But we also looked at how the orientation and the sound attenuation guidelines would also help reduce the noise impacts by requiring a barrier wall when they're adjacent to a residential use. And the sound attenuation guidelines also looks at minimizing the amount of sound generated and transmitted to sensitive receptors on how the design and layout should be, and how if there are any sound that is transmitted over these barriers, what kind of other features such as overhang structures can be utilized. So not just looking at the distance, we looked at other design features that could help mitigate that noise, and the 15 feet primarily came from looking at Santa Monica's example as well as the minimum lot depth for most of these commercial properties.
Thank you, thanks, Jay. Mayor Pretend Franklin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of other questions about the bikes. We've all seen it where there's just a mess of bicycles parked in front of a, parked in front of a restaurant. They're either locked together, or they're on the sidewalk, they're partially on the sidewalk, but they're interfering with the flow. Is there, do we have a citation process for those? You know, if a, if a building owner, restaurant owner, whoever-
Locking the sidewalk or something?
Yeah, you know.
All right, good evening, Mayor Pretend, Rachel Johnson, your police chief, and thanks for the question about bicycles obstructing the sidewalk. It is against our municipal code to have bicycles affixed to items or obstruct the sidewalk. However, sometimes enforcement of that can be quite difficult in terms of, you can't ride a ticket to a bicycle, and our ability to, unless there is some sort of emergency or public safety matter that is emergent, our ability to remove these bikes and collect them for someone to pick them up later is quite limited. So we find ourselves in a bit of a pickle where it is against municipal code to block sidewalk, or illegally affix your bike, lock your bike to a pole, or some, something like that, but we also find ourselves with the inability to just simply remove these bicycles absent some sort of exigency that we can articulate in the moment.
Right. And just a follow-up to that, can bicycles occupy an automobile parking spot as long as they pay the meter? I haven't seen too much of it, but we're seeing these huge bicycles with the big-
The big wheels, right.
Cargo area in the front with the kids and things like that, and they really don't quite fit on a sidewalk, I mean, could they?
I mean, they could, but I would have to look into our municipal code to see if we have any prohibitions against anything other than a car being in a car space, and a motorcycle being in a motorcycle space, or standing in a space. It really would depend on the nuances of our municipal code. And Eric is saying he can't think of anything that would prohibit that.
That would what?
Prohibit it.
Yeah, okay. So, so that's an idea, if we could, you know, let the public know, if, you know, if you got a question between obstructing a sidewalk or using a parking meter, they could use the parking meter.
Certainly.
Okay, great, well, thank you.
Certainly.
Councilmember Shreem.
Mic up. Chief, thank you. Jay He, great work on this, and you've become a subject matter on outdoor block turn dining, maybe the other way around, but thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions, and I don't know if it's you or Eric or maybe Public Works, do we know how much room we would gain if we, if we were to remove the parking meters at some point?
Thank you, that's a very good question. The parking meters are located about 18 inches behind the curb, and so that gives you an additional 18 inches to work with for walking past or around an outdoor dining area.
Right, and then the parking technology improvements were not part of the parking management plan, right? That was something that Public Works was working on, or is that?
So the city council previously approved the parking kiosks and a mobile app payment program, and that'll be instituted early next year.
Oh, perfect, so it could kind of help out this part.
It will.
One other question, maybe one of you guys. The trees that are in some areas of the sidewalk, I know there isn't that many in downtown, maybe nor, more in the north end, could some of those, maybe more discussion in the downtown be relocated to like bulbouts to even create larger footprint for the sidewalk?
That could possibly be considered in conjunction with maybe a beautification program, or rearranging what uses you have on the street. Say, for instance, maybe you do want to have some additional bicycle parking, maybe you want to have a seating area, maybe you want to move some trees around.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions, my colleagues? Not Jay He, proceed.
Just to add to what Eric has mentioned, we do have the public space improvements as part of the capital improvement program project for the next five years, so that would be a great opportunity to consider the trees.
Thank you.
Private property outdoor dining regulations include that music and live outdoor entertainment would be allowed using existing permits in place. However, both activities would be prohibited on outdoor dining areas above the ground floor, such as second-floor outdoor dining decks, including areas that are not completely enclosed on the same level. Alcohol service would be allowed and in certain instances require a use permit when the outdoor dining area is either located above the ground floor, operates beyond 10:00 PM, or is within 100 feet, 150 feet of residential zones, which would approximately affect 88% of the commercially zoned properties within the city. And again, AB 592's alcohol relief applies to private property outdoor dining in that with the ABC's temporary catering authorization, they will be able to continue serving alcohol until January 2029. In terms of occupancy, it would be the same as sidewalk dining in that as long as you have an adequately sized trash enclosure and service levels, they would be able to have a net increase in occupancy, and it specifies that a use permit would not be required for an increase in occupancy, as well as any minor expansions to accommodate the outdoor dining area above the ground floor for access purposes. And currently, private property outdoor dining is silent on operating hours, so it will mirror the same provision found in the sidewalk dining ordinance in that operations will be limited to 10:00 PM. However, for ground-floor outdoor dining areas that are placed more than 150 feet from residential uses, their operating hours will follow their use permit or other permit conditions associated with the establishment. And again, compliance with applicable federal, state, local codes would be required. Parking requirements here will also allow to use bicycle spaces in lieu of off-street parking spaces, and it further clarifies that off-street parking spaces can be utilized for private property outdoor dining on the premises if they have excess parking spaces available. Again, AB 592's parking relief is also applicable for existing establishments that were expanded due to COVID, where no additional parking would be required indefinitely. New provisions have been added specifically for outdoor dining areas above the ground floor. Currently, the city has second-floor outdoor dining guidelines that apply to downtown only, that was adopted back in January 2019. In an effort to encourage more outdoor dining opportunities on private property versus the right-of-way, and to minimize privatization of public spaces for commercial uses, the task force was requested to review ways in which we can make it more conducive to have second-floor outdoor dining opportunities and codify those regulations. After the task force discussed this topic in great length over three meetings, they came to the conclusion that in order to address the potential noise and privacy impacts, to name a few, these three provisions can be included, one of which is requiring that the orientation of the outdoor dining area not face residential uses and be set back a minimum 15 feet, that the design incorporates the sound attenuation guidelines, and continue prohibiting outdoor dining areas over the right-of-way. If the proposed ordinance is adopted, the downtown second-floor outdoor dining guidelines we have in place will be rescinded. The same three strikes in enforcement and revocation mechanism will apply to the private property outdoor dining regulations, and permit renewal will exclude outdoor dining areas above the ground floor as it's intended to regulate ground-floor outdoor dining areas to ensure that they are in compliance with parking clearance width and so forth. We'll pause again for any questions you may have for private property outdoor dining.
Colleagues, any questions? That's Mr. Shreem. I have a question. I want to better understand the sound attenuation guidelines, because if we've learned anything over the last 15, 20 years of dealing with outdoor dining, it's that at night, sound travels further, there's, there's less, and there's a name for it, I can't think of it, which has to do with destructive sounds that one hears throughout the day. So how do the guidelines capture the reality, which is at night, a sound that might be very proximate to a resident during the day and not make much of a difference, but at night is much more significant?
First of all, second-floor outdoor, third-floor outdoor dining areas in the future would be limited to a 10:00 PM stop in terms of operation, so that is one way we try to mitigate noise impacts in nighttime operations. And second, because the way that sound is generated and transmitted to sensitive receptors around the area is determined by various factors that are really out of control because it could be affected by weather, the time of day, the season, the surrounding ambient noise, and unusual circumstances that may arise, so it is really a case-by-case basis, and it would be a trial and error for some, some of the restaurants since we wouldn't really know the reality of how significant the noise disturbance is. And the way that we do enforce the noise ordinance is really using the reasonable person test and not the decibel levels because they are obsolete and outdated, and that also is a very subjective criteria that is used. We did open up the sound attenuation guidelines for any future updates, depending on how we experience the concerns and the complaints that we receive. So I know this isn't a concrete answer to your question, but we will try to do as much as we can to mitigate those noise impacts, and we are, we heard a lot from the business community that they are willing to work with the residential groups to also be good neighbors, so in that sense, we are confident that we can try our best to address noise impacts that may arise out of operations into the night.
Let me leave it at that, unless other colleagues have any questions at this point. Thank you, you may proceed.
As part of the program development, the council also directed the task force to also provide recommendations on vehicle loading provisions, as it was a concern repeatedly heard from the residential community due to the blocked access and noise concerns. And as a result, the task force recommended that two new definitions be added, which is defining what commercial loading and unloading is, and also defining that large commercial vehicles are those more than 30 feet in length. Specifically, the new chapter 14.44 prohibits large commercial vehicles from loading along streets and alleys less than 36 feet in width within CD and CNE zones during certain timeframes, unless no residential uses exist on either side. For context, major commercial corridors such as Manhattan Avenue, Manhattan Beach Boulevard, and Highland Avenue are exempt as they are greater than 36 feet in width, and the prohibited timeframe is generally from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM the next day, with the exception of Friday and Saturday when it starts from 6:00 PM. In addition, there is a provision that added that allows the city's traffic engineer with the flexibility to prohibit loading beyond the set timeframes that I've just mentioned on certain streets. For example, it could be a complete prohibition at all times in a residential street. This would be our last pause, if you have any questions related to commercial vehicle loading.
Colleagues, any questions? I guess for me, what I'm most concerned about is what I call the pinching effect, where, for example, as one is heading west on Manhattan Beach Boulevard, makes a right heading north on Morning Side, there's a loading zone right there, and I want, it can be challenging, particularly if you have pedestrians walking in the street and trying to get by, and I just want to better understand how this will be implemented to address challenges with, particularly with more traffic during the summer. What's the practical effect of this, is I guess what I'm asking.
I will defer that to our traffic engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. In certain special circumstances, like you mentioned, say, for instance, the narrowness of Morningside Drive and adjacent loading zone, those will be handled with special parking signs or special loading signs where it's prohibited to make sure that we don't have a pinch point. There are other places, other alleys where you are just, it's just too narrow. And so those would be posted so that everyone has proper notice that it's loading is prohibited in this area. Otherwise, the blanket restriction will be as was proposed for streets less than 36 feet wide, there would be a time restriction on when you can load and unload.
Helpful, thank you. Colleagues, any questions?
Thank you. You may proceed.
As part of the program development, the consultant team conducted a fiscal impact analysis that included considering a tiered sidewalk dining use fee that the task force discussed and recommended in the March 2025 status update report. Specifically, the task force recommended that we increase the monthly sidewalk dining use fee, which was set at $3 per square foot at the time. And this has been updated this fiscal year to $4 per square foot. And they also recommended implementing a tiered sidewalk dining use fee system based on whether alcohol is served and the location of the establishment as it generally correlates to foot traffic as well as sales revenue generated. And when setting the maximum fee, the consultant has advised that it shouldn't exceed the average market rent for indoor retail space as it may discourage participation. And at the time of their analysis conducted in 2023, 2024, that threshold was $5 for downtown and $4 for North Manhattan Beach. For example, the tiered sidewalk use fee schedule may look something like this, where the incremental increase is 50 cents for the base fee of $4 that is applied to all businesses. If a business either serves alcohol or is located in downtown, their fee would be $4.50. And if both triggers apply, it would be an additional 50 cents resulting in $5. This is an area that staff is seeking the council's direction to determine the fee schedule in terms of the fee categories and fee structure amounts. While the draft ordinance was being prepared, staff also worked on outdoor dining guidelines to provide a user-friendly manual with design standards and operational requirements. It provides an overview of the ordinance in terms of the process requirements and conditions to obtain a sidewalk dining or a private property outdoor dining permit and has been split into two documents because of the coastal zone that requires receiving certification from the California Coastal Commission when it comes to the local coastal program amendments, meaning that the private property outdoor dining guidelines can be published after the council adopts the ordinance. The sidewalk dining guidelines, which are applicable in the coastal zone, will be amenable to the public after we receive certification from the Coastal Commission. The draft guidelines have been included in the staff report and will be brought back at the second reading, so we do have an opportunity to make any changes or updates based on the council's direction tonight. The proposed ordinance was subject to the California Environmental Quality Act and a draft initial study and negative declaration was prepared in accordance to the CEQA guidelines and circulated for review in August and September of this year. During that period, we received two public comments, one related to sidewalk dining objects obstructing the right of way in the city's enforcement, and the other related to the above-ground floor outdoor dining noise impacts. Both comments with the city's responsive have been included in the final document. In conclusion, staff recommends that the council introduce the proposed ordinance and adopt a negative declaration. And upon adoption of the ordinance, we'll be submitting the local coastal program amendments to the Coastal Commission for certification in order to take effect in the coastal zone. And as previously mentioned during the sidewalk dining portion of the presentation, this is the modified language that staff is proposing to clarify that sidewalk dining-related objects other than tables and chairs must be consistent with the findings in section 7.36.065 and authorized as part of the permit, meaning that no separate permits would be required other than the sidewalk dining permit. And second, staff is seeking the council's direction on establishing a tiered sidewalk dining use fee where we would need to determine the tier categories and fee structure. This concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jaheem. Colleagues, any questions before I open the public hearing to public comment? Councilmember Shurin.
Thank you. Real quick. Jaheem, as far as the sidewalk dining fee schedule is concerned, what kind of background do we do to come up with these fees?
We looked at the report presented by the consultant team. They looked at two examples, one in Hermosa Beach and one in Beverly Hills. And because Hermosa Beach is similar to how we operate and the nature of how we're situated, their fee was based on whether alcohol was served and also the location, whether it was on the Pier Plaza or not. So that was the basis that we used as well.
What was that be?
For Hermosa, it's not a consistent increase. It's $2, $3, $6. So it's a little different, but here the example I use is a consistent increase.
I know, I appreciate that. And what was the Beverly Hills?
It was less than $2 per square foot.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up on Councilmember Shurin's question. So what's the policy goal with the tiered fees? Is it the expectation that the restaurant chur will have more revenue because alcohol is served? I'm just not understanding what the idea is behind the tier fee.
It's also related to the potential for enforcement and what enforcement resources the city might expend on it for alcohol use, for example, could potentially generate more noise, which would require more staff resources from a code enforcement perspective. And so that was part of the calculation.
Helpful, thank you. Mayor Plutem Franklin.
Yes. I was just curious, is there any debate about the measurement of the square footage of the sidewalk area? I mean, do they, say a restaurant says, I only want to use this much, and it's only 50% of what's available. Do we charge them for everything or just for what they use?
We charge them for the area that they apply for because of the site plan that is submitted as part of the application. Whatever they draw out as their outlined area would be what we use to calculate the base fee.
Okay, so again, as it pertains to my question, is it, so if they design and say, we're only going to be using half of the sidewalk space that we're entitled to?
We still apply the entire area that they applied for when assessing the fees.
Okay.
If I may clarify, Mayor Plutem, when they apply for the permit, they also include a plan that delineates exactly the area of the sidewalk they are going to be utilizing. And it includes them putting tables and chairs on that plan. So we also understand what the occupancy change is going to be. And so they choose what area they are delineating and they put that on the site plan and we calculate it based on the site plan.
Okay, so there may be some blank space and they don't get charged for that?
It's the border of the area that they put on their plan.
Okay, great. I had one other question. Oh, as far as the citations. So if they get a citation for not following the guidelines of where they put the outdoor dining or, you know, things like that, is that also a third time? You know, you're out and they have to wait a year, like the music?
Those are all administrative citations and yes, so it's after the third one, they're out.
Okay, until the following year. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other council questions before I open it up for public comment? Seeing none, we'll open public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak on this item for up to, remind me, is it two or three minutes? Three minutes. Any member of the public in chambers care to address this item? Going once, going twice, seeing none, move on to Zoom. Are any members of the public waiting to speak on the item on Zoom?
Yes, we have Jim Burton.
You may proceed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I apologize I'm not in chambers tonight. I got a couple, a couple of questions regarding the alcohol service for...
Are you still there, Mr. Burton? I think we just lost your connection. Wait a moment to see if he calls back again. Yeah, calls back in. If not, Martha, are there other members of the public waiting to speak on Zoom?
There's no other requests.
Okay, let's give just one more minute longer because we did have Mr. Burton who did want to speak. I'm going to try and kill a little time and just have an open dialogue with the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, we do have a member of the public that would like to make comments before we close public comments. Any advice that you might have, particularly if this individual's might be experiencing electronic technical difficulty getting in?
Yes, we could keep the public hearing open.
While counsel deliberate?
Yes.
And then if the speaker wishes to call in. Mr. Burton?
Mr. Mayor.
You may proceed and we'll start your time over again.
Yeah, I apologize. I've got, I've got some techni- technology issues right now. No issues, let's continue.
You may proceed for up to three minutes. If you're still there.
He's unmuted.
He's unmuted or we've lost his connection?
Probably.
We've lost the connection. Okay, why don't we proceed as the city attorney advises? I'll turn to my council colleagues and perhaps then before there is a motion, is when would be appropriate to close public comment?
Yes, we can give another chance. And so you got, the council can deliberate and then before there's a motion, give them one more opportunity and then close the public hearing.
Okay. Taking a last look at our assistant city clerk to see if he might have called back in.
I appreciate you, Mr. Mayor, in making every attempt so that Mr. Burton can give him an opinion.
Okay, in which case, turn it over to council, Mayor Plutem Franklin.
Great, thank you. So this is a great presentation. It really outlines with a lot of specifics what has been missing since the Wild West days of the COVID shutdown and outdoor dining decks and things like that. So it's definitive, it's clear. I think anybody can read it and understand it. And certainly, it's helped me quite a bit because what happens is our businesses, you know, see us walking down the street and pull us in and say, look at that, is that allowed? That type of thing. So it's really terrific and I hope that our representatives here for business groups will spread the information out there if it is approved. I've been throughout the process trying to find, go back in my mind of what some of the issues were, and it's all covered. We got the, you know, we got the sound, we got the music, we got the sidewalk dining, the parameters, the number of spaces, the number of seats, the alcohol use. So I just want to thank staff very much and city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Plutem. Councilmember Shurin.
Thank you, Mayor. Jaheem, again, Adam, Eric and Masa, this is a great example for maximum efficiency to break up the presentation and walk us through this very complex item. One comment on the fees. I'd like to ask if, or propose, I'm looking on slide 26, page 418 of your packet. A little different scenario, but within these same parameters that we have with the fees, but $4 for the north, $4.50 for the north with alcohol, $5 for downtown and $5.50 for downtown with alcohol. So it's within the similar range, but mixing it up a little bit, giving the north businesses a little bit more of a break due to foot traffic.
Can you repeat what you're suggesting? Because I think what you're suggesting, if I'm correct, is a different structure for fees, is that right?
Correct.
And can you repeat them just so we're all taking notes?
Can we put slide 26 up, please? 418. So it would be $4 for North Manhattan Beach businesses and $4.50 for North Manhattan Beach businesses with alcohol, $5 for downtown and $5.50 for downtown with alcohol. So it's within the parameters, just, you know.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just wanted to see who's next in line, but I think we want to facilitate, Councilman Mayor Tumey. Any objection if I allow, Councilor?
Oh, no, please.
Please, go ahead.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, just to clarify and then I'll make my own comments. So I'm curious, why, like, you know, because it's a similar structure but a little bit different. So, so in other words, you're, every, $4, I was at four o'clock, for North Manhattan Beach, $4.50 for North Manhattan Beach with alcohol, $5 downtown, $5.50.
With alcohol.
With alcohol.
I mean, it's within, it's within the range. It just helps, just the north, the foot traffic and north end businesses don't do as well as downtown businesses due to parking and, yes.
But don't they get, I mean, and it, it maybe it's just to bring in more revenue, which is a fine reason, but aren't they given sort of a discount in this current proposal?
No, because it's $4 for all businesses, north end or downtown.
Oh, I see.
So it's not really a revenue generator, it just, it just separates the downtown from the north. $1 extra, 50 cents extra a square foot is not going to give you very much. It's going to be de minimis money.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Yeah, I just, that's a clarification. I'll hold my thoughts till after, when it's my turn.
Councilmember Turner.
Oh, thank you. I just had a comment about, just, I wanted to thank the task force and the PPIC and staff. You know, I know it's been a long process and there's been a lot of iterations of the public demand, what residents had to deal with during the shutdown and that you've all been able to really listen to our residents, listen to our businesses and really try to strike a balance that will work for our city. And so I know that's a difficult task to do. And I think these guidelines are really important going forward so that we all know, you know, the rules of engagement for the, for the businesses and then also still provide businesses with opportunity to incorporate sidewalk dining and on private property outdoor dining. So thank you for all of that. And I hope that by, you know, as we engage in our beautification efforts and expansion of sidewalks and our flex spaces, that this will also help enhance outdoor dining for our businesses. So thank you.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes, but, Mr. Mayor, could I ask if the member from the public has?
Is back.
Do you have any initial comments before, and then I'll make some comments too?
Yeah, I mean, I was.
But we can also see now is, is public calling. May I make a suggestion then before I call on you? And that is perhaps if Speaker Mr. Burton is listening, he sends his comments by email to the city clerk and that way the city clerk can, we can check your email before we close the public hearing.
The city manager's trying to.
City manager?
I also sent him an email in case he's receiving that to see if he wants to send any comments.
Thank you. So we'll look to both of you before we close the hearing.
Because I was just hoping to, and my, my call button went away. I was going to make a motion, but I realized I can't make a motion till we close the public comments. Echoing a lot of comments that my colleagues have made, it has been a long process, one that started before, I think, council member, I'm sorry, Mayor Plutem Franklin was the only one here when it was in the middle of it all. So staff, the task force, our businesses, our traffic engineer, all of staff, I mean, has worked really hard, but also our commissioners, our PPIC and our planning commission, because what I appreciate of all of this is, so task force. and our planning commission, because what I appreciate of all of this is, so task force, task force made some recommendations, it came to council, staff. Staff agreed with some of the task force's recommendations, but then PPIC said, you know, "We want to add this onto it" and planning commission upheld that. And so I think this, I wouldn't call it nearly an efficient process, uh, it's been a long, uh, process involving a lot of people, but I think it's a well-vetted process. It's hard to believe that we didn't have some of those, um, uh, codes or regulations about commercial vehicle loading. It's hard to believe, but we didn't, so thank you, thank you, thank you, I think that's going to make a big difference. Um, I'd love to make a motion, um, how long, how long do we think we'll wait? I, I love it that we're making it available, but I think.
I'll make some brief comments and then we'll try one last time. My comments would be echoing my colleagues, this has been part of a long journey. Our counsel and the counsel before sought to explore ways to facilitate more outdoor dining on our city streets. We looked at potential hardscape modifications that turned out to be prohibitively expensive and raised various issues for the downtown and also for the north end. Expressing thanks to our outdoor dining task force that rolled with the direction from council. Uh, they came up with various proposals, went through our process, which is a great way to get public input through our commissions and, uh, ultimately ended up with these proposals, which as the mayor Pro Tem indicated, really helped clarify our rules, roles and also as councilmember Hoard indicated, it's hard to believe that many of these provisions have not been in place. I don't doubt for a moment there will still be challenges of the intersection between residents living close to commercial businesses, particularly at night, where there is just a greater sensitivity to noise. But this at least gives greater tools to our staff, more of a template, more of a process, and I look forward to, to seeing how it's implemented. So with that, have, has the city manager or the city clerk heard from our member of the public who was a member of the outdoor dining task force and wanted to weigh in? Looking to our city clerk, no comments?
No emails and no, he's not on the call anymore.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, any objection to my closing public comment?
None at all.
All right, in which case I will close public comment. Councilmember Hoard, I see that you've made a motion.
I have, but I, I was remiss in my, oh, sorry.
Sorry, no, if I could just add, uh, just a minor comment before the motion, it's, um, just, uh, because the, um, areas that are the subject of this ordinance are located in the coastal zone and we are beholden to sort of final coastal approval, um, before any of these, um, sort of come into effect. So I just want to make it clear, this is not something that's going to happen right away.
Thank you.
Yes.
And with the exception of the, the, uh, the loading, um, which is not subject to coastal's review. And then the second thing is, in the motion, uh, you, if you want to consider staff's minor amendment to that language there, um, it would be as amended.
Thank you.
So I was going to ask if you could put that language, or I could just say as amended, um, but I was remiss in my congratulatory or laudatory comments. Um, I really appreciate the guidance, uh, at least the attempt, and I think it, it succeeded in simple, plain language, uh, guidelines. And, uh, I really appreciate that because sometimes it's not clear, uh, to folks, so thank you. That, that's actually very hard to do, what, what's done there, I think, so I really appreciate it. My motion, so Mr. City Attorney, um, I assume I have to make different motions here?
Really, the only issue is the fee issue.
We don't have to adopt the resolution?
You can introduce the ordinance.
Okay.
And adopt the resolution that goes to the coastal commission at the same time with one motion.
Right, and then the second part, then there'd be another motion for the fee, that's what I.
Yes.
Right.
So this is just the ordinance?
Yes.
And the resolution?
That's right, that's what I was assuming, so that's what I'd like to do is introduce ordinance number 25 dash 0013 and adopt resolution number 25 dash 0129.
And I see that motion has been seconded by councilmember Sherrian. Any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote.
I have to read the title. Ordinance number 25 dash 0013, an ordinance of the city of Manhattan Beach, amending sections of the Manhattan Beach municipal code and the Manhattan Beach local coastal program related to the long-term outdoor dining program development.
As amended by staff, that was, I did not say that originally, that if you make my second, okay, thank you. It's very complicated.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, the remaining items include providing direction on tiered sidewalk dining use fee, is that correct?
Yes, so that adopted both the ordinance and the resolution, adopting the neck deck. It's unclear to me about the coastal commission, you need some further direction on that?
You mean on E?
There, um, there's a draft resolution, um, authorizing submission of the ordinance. You, you need further direction on that?
Yes.
Okay, so let's address the fees and then we'll, we'll go to the last resolution.
Councilmember Sherrian has made a motion, see what the motion is and then we can talk about it if we care to.
Motion is, uh, adopt resolution 25 dash 129 and, uh, providing direction on the tiered sidewalk use fees.
Wait, you don't have, do you have to do, didn't I already adopt resolution?
We need, we need D and E.
So you just need D?
And E. They should be separate, right?
Item D is the fees. So is there a motion to?
So let's clarify, currently as presented, it was covered in the staff report and I think there were some questions raised and a proposal to potentially amend those fees, correct?
Yes.
So councilmember Sherrian has a motion on the floor and that motion is?
The motion is to adopt the fees as provided into, in the presentation, the tiered sidewalk dining tiers as provided for in the presentation.
Thank you for clarifying, and I see that's been seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Franklin. Any comments, any colleagues?
No.
If not, call for the vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, direction on any other items, I'm looking to the city manager.
Yeah, I just made a motion.
We also need a motion on E, which would authorize staff to submit the amendments to the coastal commission.
And I've made that motion.
And I see that motion by councilmember Hoard with a second by Mayor Tim Franklin, any comments? Seeing none, call for the vote.
I'm, I stand corrected.
E was just to complete the review of the guidelines, which you did, and provide any direction if necessary. So there's no need, we're going to come back with that resolution, um, at the next meeting.
Okay.
So we just had it in the packet for your review.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, so for the second reading at this point, resolution.
Your mic is off, I'm sorry.
And we'll, that'll come back to us once they approve it.
Okay, so to be clear, um, no further action is needed tonight. This will come back for second reading, for the council to consider second reading of the ordinance and the resolution to submit this to the coastal commission.
Very good, all right. I propose we take a five-minute break.
You second.
In which case, we'll stand and recess.
Thanks for this.
Can we go live?
Thank you. Call back to order our city council meeting of Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, and now move on to item number 10. Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting two ordinances to amend Title IX in Chapter 3.16 of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code to adopt the most recent California Building Standards Code by reference.
Good evening again, members of the council. Yes, Ryan Heiss, the building official will be providing the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Ryan Heiss, building official, back for my fourth code adoption process.
Really?
The California Building Standards Code adoption is a routine rulemaking process that occurs every three years. The last complete set of building standards codes was adopted by the state in 2022 and became effective on January 1st of 2023. The city is mandated by state law to adopt the California Building Standards Code on January 1st, 2026, but the city may amend these codes to address local conditions. On October 21st, 2025, the city council introduced ordinance number 25-009 and 25-0010 and set a public hearing for hearing date for tonight, November 18th, 2025. Cities can amend the standards codes due to climatic, geological, or topographical justifications. The allowable amendment process has been modified by Assembly Bill 130, adopted June 30th, 2025, which includes provisions that prohibit cities from modifying residential building standards except under specific conditions. One of these conditions is the continuation of local amendments adopted prior to September 30th, 2025. The code adoption process discussed tonight does not affect the municipal code modifications adopted by the city council at September 16th meeting. A few of the more notable 2025 code cycle changes are shown on the current slide. Many of the other changes are clarifications and language updates to assist with the understanding and implementation of the code. The local amendments are carried forward from previous code cycle years and include limiting the timeframe for permits, clarifying when sprinklers are required, fire sprinklers are required, and prohibiting wood shakes for roofing, continuing undergrounding requirements, use of non-corrosive building materials in residential construction, and there is no proposed increase in state environmental or sustainability measures. The city council recently adopted local amendments on September 16th, which will remain, and additionally, there's been the removal of the local fire code amendment for high-rise construction. Lastly, the local amendments, sorry, finally, all other local amendments are carried forward from the previous code cycle as proposed by a previous joint LA County effort to account for hazards specific to our earthquake prone region. Public outreach occurred as required by law, and additionally, an email was sent out to our construction community. Staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt the two ordinances and associated resolutions shown on the presentation. That concludes the presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Councilmember Haworth.
Thank you. Okay, I just, I have a question. It's just to carry forward, but it is the one regarding the maximum duration of construction permits. And two questions. Is that construction permits for both residential and commercial properties?
Yes.
So I'm curious about, and I appreciate that we have a time limit, that it's, you know, the state does not define a limit. And I can see for commercial, maybe the four years. I'm curious as to how we landed on four years for a residential house or project.
The city council previously discussed this, actually off-cycle of the triennial code adoption. And the previous, the previous timeframe was two years for residential construction, and it was taking longer than than that to finish a project in the current environment at that time. And four years was chosen as a timeframe where most projects were finishing at that time, maybe ninety percent.
Or could be finished within that time. And is one of the reasons for that it was taking longer, I understand supply and demand, especially now, you know, with lots of construction in the area. But I noticed in my neighborhood, people, you know, in the sand section going down a level. And that seems to be incredibly complicated. I mean, I'm, I feel like a little kid looking through the fence, but it's like, there's so much shoring, and there's so much stuff. Is that adding to the time it takes to complete projects?
The complexity of the homes currently is definitely adding time, as well as the, you know, availability of labor, materials, and other things.
Thank you.
Any other council colleague questions? I have one. Just to better understand the implications of AB 130 and what it's going to mean to our city going forward. You referenced, in fact, the recent amendments that were adopted by council on September 16th, 2025. Maybe by way of example, indicate what, if you could quickly summarize for members of the public what those amendments are, because it limits what we can do as a local jurisdiction going forward.
Summarize AB 130, or summarize what we previously adopted?
AB 130, which, of course, we have no choice in. This is now the law of our state. But more particularly, it's made reference, it's referenced in particular in your report that we could not adopt the zone code amendments that we just adopted under the current law now. But explain what those zoning code amendments were, because it helps explain how we are going to be once again limited in what we can do in the way of laws that we can now adopt related to local property use.
Sure. Thank you. AB 130 limits the changes local jurisdictions can make to residential code amendments, specifically for single-family residents up to multifamily residential projects. And after September 30th, we're, like I said, we're unable to change those for six years. But at previous time during September 30th, or the adoption on September 16th, the city council voted to add additional requirements to different types of projects with with different triggers on criteria to add sound walls to protect neighboring properties from large construction projects, to require Phase 1 environmental reports on certain sized properties, and other, other changes to our local municipal code in order to protect the quality of life and the safety of adjacent neighbors.
Thank you. Any other council comments? If not, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Any members of the public in chambers care to address this item? Seeing none, Martha, is anybody on Zoom that would care to address this item?
No requests on Zoom.
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, I see that there is a motion by Mayor Perterm Franklin, and what is that motion?
Yeah, that'd be moved to adopt ordinances, numbers 25-0009 and 25-0010. City Attorney Barrett, do we wait?
It's probably better just to do them separately, because I have to read a very long title.
Okay.
So that would be the first motion, and I see that's been seconded by Councilmember Tarnay. Any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote, and I refer to calling for the vote as opposed to calling for the question, which is the formal name, just because it sounds so colloquial in this day and age. So we'll call for the vote.
Thank you for explaining it.
I'll read the title. And this is the building code. Ordinance number 25-0009, an ordinance of the City of Manhattan Beach, adopting by reference the 2025 additions of the California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Electrical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Mechanical Code, California Existing Building Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Energy Code, California Administrative Code, California Historical Building Code, and the California Reference Standards Code. Together with certain amendments, deletions, and additions, and approving a sequo exemption determination.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. I see there's now been a second motion by Mayor Perterm Franklin.
Okay, and I move that we adopt resolution numbers 25-0118 and 25-0119.
Let me see, that's been seconded by Councilmember Haworth. Is there a desire to read the title, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I'll read the title, please. And thanks to the city clerk's office for giving me a hard copy of these ordinances. Ordinance number 25-0010, an ordinance of the City of Manhattan Beach, adopting by reference the 2025 addition of the California Fire Code. Together with certain deletions, additions, and amendments, amending Title III of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code, and approving a sequo exemption determination.
Call for the vote.
Is this the question?
Motion passes five zero.
When you say it like that, I wasn't so sure, but...
Okay, now move on to item number 11, which has a shorter title that I can read, which is fiscal year 2025, 2026 fiscal quarter, first quarter, excuse me, budget update, including an appropriation proposed of $188,144 from the fleet fund balance and authorization to upgrade the purchase of a replacement fire apparatus approved on May 6, 2025, and one proposed staffing adjustment.
That's not that brief.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Libby Brethauer, Finance Director, and my item tonight is focused on the first quarter of our fiscal year 2026. Fiscal year 2026 budget was adopted last June, and the new fiscal year began on July 1st. We are pleased to present this first quarter update tonight, and then look forward to providing a mid-year update in February. So as you can see from this slide, we provide our timeline for our annual budget process. The budget process feels like it goes all year for us, because as we adopt the budget in June, we come to you in this, for this first quarter update in November, we'll be back in February, and then we're currently working, completing our year-end audit for fiscal year 25, and then we'll be back to you in January with the annual comprehensive financial report presentation. So moving on to our fiscal 26 first quarter results and analysis, we actually had a lot going on in this first quarter. We issued $16.6 million in certificates of participation to replenish the general fund for the acquisition of 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard that we purchased last April for $13 million. And then we also spent $3.6 million to purchase replacement public safety radio communications equipment. So since these big numbers really skew the comparison to the prior year, we've excluded them from the slide here and also show them below a subtotal line in the attachment. So with these numbers excluded, these kind of one-time extraordinary items, so that we could easily compare ongoing general fund operations to the prior year, you can see that revenues were up over $800,000, or 6.8%. And expenditures were up above $476,000, or 2.1%. So our general fund revenues in the adopted budget totaled about $125 million, but this did include the $13.2 million for bond proceeds for 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard, which is in the yellow, or sorry, the blue other revenue category here on the chart. The largest general fund revenue sources are general taxes, like property taxes, sales and use tax, including Measure MMB, the hotel and short-term rental transient occupancy tax, business license tax, et cetera. So together, these general taxes make up 70% of our regular general fund revenues. And these general taxes are critical to funding ongoing operations like police and fire services, which are largely not supported by service charges or user fees. So going into a little more detail on revenues, the narrative in our staff report also highlights these key revenue trends, and the attached chart of general fund revenues by category shows that we have received about 12% of budgeted revenues to date. So this is expected, given that some revenue sources do not come in evenly throughout the fiscal year. For example, the bulk of our property tax is received in December, January, April, and May every year. But based on the last data provided by our property tax consultants, HDL, assessed values of properties have slightly increased more than expected when we prepared the budget. So this will result in anticipated additional property tax revenue of about $387,000. Regarding sales and use tax, which is the second line on the chart showing on the screen, that's our standard 1% Bradley Burns sales tax rate. The third line down, however, local transaction and use tax, that's our, our kind of technical name for the half-cent Measure MMB transactions and use tax measure that was approved by voters and effective on April 1st. So these revenues that were receded in the first quarter of fiscal year 26 were actually generated last spring, because it takes some time for businesses to pay the state, the state to pay us. But we just wanted to share some recent information that does indicate that sales tax data for general consumer goods and fuel and services, fuel and service stations are slightly down. And HDL, based on their analysis, they're showing this downward trend, and the theories that it's spending on non-necessities are down just due to the general economy. It's a trend, you know, because of the political climate, inflation, tariffs. So we are starting to see evidence that those may be affecting revenues. But again, we'll come back to you with more information with the mid-year report in February. Additionally, transient occupancy tax for hotels and short-term rentals is also showing slightly down, likely due to the same reasons that maybe people were starting to travel a little less. But again, we're still getting further information, and we'll hopefully have some more evidence from conversations with hotels in February. But I just wanted to note that hotels and short-term rental operators, all that operate in the coastal zone, all do pay a 14% TOT rate that's collected from their visitors. And if you recall, Measure A was approved by voters in 2019 to increase our TOT rate to 14% to generate additional general fund revenues to offset necessary public safety enhancements. So again, these are pretty critical general fund revenues, and really go to support our general fund operations. The next line down is business license tax. This shows an uptick from the prior year quarter. This is partially due to staff and HDL recently implementing our new discovery program, which identifies unlicensed businesses within the city using HDL's additional resources. So of the revenue collected in the first quarter, about $123,000 in new business license tax was just from the discovery program alone. So that means they helped us find new businesses that were not previously paying tax, but will be going forward. So for building permits and plan check fees, I wanted to note that the volume of those, in those categories, did increase from the prior year. And then we also did update some user fees, and that went into effect on July 1st. So overall, these trends do indicate that will likely meet or exceed the budgets on those categories at the end of the year. Another thing to note was the interest earnings category. It shows is down compared to the prior year. However, if you, if you recall, we did have a significantly lower general fund balance because we made the purchase of 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard, and then replenished those funds at the end of August with the bond proceeds. So hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll see that that has ticked back up. And again, the written staff report includes additional narrative on these and other revenue trends, but we expect by the end of the year to meet budget at this time. So moving on to general fund expenditures, this chart shows by category, our total expenditures in the adopted budget were about $105.6 million. And you could see from the chart here that over half, almost 60% of our general fund budget goes toward employee salaries and benefits, since we are a service organization. Materials and services category includes costs for contract services, legal services, supplies, and training. Internal services includes the general fund allocation charges that go toward our four internal service funds of insurance, information technology, fleet, and building maintenance. And lastly, the debt service category includes obligations for Marine Avenue Park and our pension obligation bonds. So when comparing to the prior year first quarter, some variances to note include salaries and benefits, which are up as expected, based on the MOU adjustments that were approved last year. And this also impacted the employee benefits category as well. Contract services decreased on, as shown on the screen. However, this did, we did do, make an accounting adjustment where we moved the Manhattan Beach Unified School District Joint Use Agreement from the contracts services category into the materials and services category to align with our accounting practices for lease revenues. So that was kind of a change, just moving something from one category to the next, which also impacted the overall comparison here. But other than that, contract services also decreased, which is normal to fluctuate due to the timing of invoices and the use of consultants for projects. and the use of consultants for projects. Materials and services, due to that MBUSD agreement that was placed in that category, is up slightly in the first quarter. And then internal services, internal service charges was up as expected, based on the budgets that were approved for those chargeouts going into those internal service funds. And lastly, you do see at the bottom there the public safety replacement purchase of about $3.4 million. So again, we pulled that out so that way you could see kind of the ongoing operations separate from those one-time purchases. But overall, our spending is about 22% of the budget and trending as expected in the general fund expenditures. So this chart, we'd just like to show it by department as well. You can see that with over half of the budget spent on the police and fire departments, the city council has dedicated over 55% of the general fund budget to these departments. Public Works' $12 million budget also goes to pay for engineering, street repair, traffic control, and park maintenance, which are all outward-facing services to keep our streets, sidewalks, and parks in great condition. And the next largest slice is the Parks and Recreation Department, which are largely offset by cost recovery fees. So this slide shows the same quarter-to-quarter comparison, but split out by department. Now, the numbers here do include the public safety radio purchases in police and fire, so you can see that they have pretty large variances compared to the prior year. However, we do, you know, it's all expected within the budget. And overall, we anticipate all departments to end the year within their budgets. And department staff are currently, are about to start working on mid-year projections, and any updates will be presented to the city council in February. So putting all this together, just as a reminder, the budget was adopted, the first orange box shows a budgetary surplus of about $6.6 million, largely thanks to Measure MMB. And, but as expected at the beginning of the fiscal year, then we carry forward some remaining contracts from the prior year, which increase the expenditures. So you can see that that anticipated surplus did go down to about $4.5 million, based on our currently revised budget. The first quarter, though, you could see expenditures outpaces revenue again because a lot of our revenues don't come in equally paced throughout the year. So comparing it to the prior year, we're still in line with, you know, about $10.4 million. Last year, it was $10.7 million. So moving on to a few other noteworthy revenue trends, we also, in the presentation I gave last year for the first quarter, I talked about the financial impact of water consumption being down after two unusually high rainy seasons and the city encouraging water conservation. So this year, July, August, and September, we're warmer and drier, so water consumption was back up, actually. The other reason our water fund revenues were up by about $211,000 is because the city council approved the pass-through volumetric rate adjustments back in May, so that did go into effect. So again, our fixed rates didn't change, just the consumption-based charges increased in line with our costs for water purchases. So we're passing on the higher cost of our purchases to our customers. And consequently, we see the water fund revenues are up from the previous quarter, previous year quarter. Rates in the sewer fund, however, did not change. So we see those revenues were down by about $255,000 in the sewer fund. So these two funds continue to not meet our reserve policy, which is why we are pursuing a new water and sewer rate study that is expected to get underway in early 2026. And our new favorite topic in the city, parking. I wanted to also address the parking fund revenues, just to give a quick update. That, so with parking fund, which again just has city lots and street meters and permits, this was up about $392,000 or 27% compared to the prior year quarter because we did have those new parking meter rates and parking permit fees that went into effect last May. So these changes are strengthening the fund's financial position and will allow us to support more reinvestment in parking infrastructure, maintenance, and technology upgrades. So one other item to note, the parking fund budget and our projections include four weeks or 28 days of free parking in city lots and streets for the holidays coming up. So you will start to see those red bags going on over the meters on Wednesday, November 28th, and the bags will be removed on December 26th. So we just wanted to mention it. And also, this year, it's a little unusual. Usually, it seems like the four weeks does not include the Black Friday shopping day after Thanksgiving. However, this year, because of the way the dates fell, there will be free parking in downtown and North Manhattan Beach on Black Friday. So just remind all of your friends to get out and shop and dine and spend that extra money at our businesses instead of on parking. So we also wanted to mention for anyone joining us tonight who maybe didn't attend the meeting on November 3rd, that our parking initiatives were discussed on November 3rd with the Parking Management Strategies and Toolkit Report. So if you're interested in this, please view the links on our webpage and then look out for staff to return with an update in early 2026. Okay, so switching gears to the, some proposed changes that we're seeking city council's approval for tonight. Historically, our quarterly and mid-year budget reports typically include expenditure or staffing updates in response to needs that arise throughout the year. For various reasons, we like to address these head-on instead of waiting until the next budget cycle. So the first item tonight is a proposed change to the fire apparatus replacement that was approved by the city council on May 6th earlier this year. On that date, you approved a 75-foot aerial ladder truck for nearly $1.6 million. However, as a result of the city's residential overlay district that was established to comply with state housing laws, multiple high-density residential projects of six stories or more have been proposed and are in various stages of development and like pre-submental and plan review processes. So that said, the 75-foot ladder truck is unable to perform effective water and rescue operations for structures over five feet. So to accommodate this, the potential taller structures, a larger truck of 170, or sorry, 107 feet is needed. And our fire personnel are on, are in the room in case you have any technical questions about the fire apparatus that I cannot answer. But to effectuate the change from 75 feet to 107 feet, the purchase price increases by about $594,000. So, however, this still does not include outfitting the vehicles for radios and other equipment once it's received in four years. So our fleet fund currently has an existing appropriation of $406,000, which we would utilize to assist with the higher purchase price this fiscal year, resulting in the appropriation need of $188,144. So in the current fiscal year. So to ensure the funds to outfit the vehicle are there when we need them in a few years, staff will reappropriate the funds needed for outfitting the vehicle over our next budget cycles and smooth out the impact a little as well. So I don't want to get too deep into our accounting weeds, but as an internal service fund, I also just wanted to note that the balance in the fleet fund is there for future vehicle replacements of our existing fleet. So if we pull money from the balance, then, you know, that would mean we may not have sufficient fund balance for future replacements. So I mentioned this to explain that ultimately, the general fund will be impacted by spending down the balance in the fleet fund because we have to charge it out to either the general fund, or we also charge vehicle replacements to the water sewer enterprise funds, wherever the vehicle is allocated to. So happy to answer more questions about that if you have them. But to facilitate the upgrade to the larger truck, we are seeking an appropriation of $188,144 from the fleet fund balance, and then also seeking authorization for the city manager to execute the purchase change order. So the second item that we're proposing as a change tonight is a minor staffing adjustment in the Human Resources Department that has no budgetary impact in fiscal year 26. This upgrade will utilize existing funding to better align full-time staffing with organizational needs and address retention considerations. So in fiscal year 26, there will be no budgetary changes needed because the department has savings and part-time salaries that can be utilized over the next seven months. So to conclude, staff recommends that the city council receive the report from the first quarter of fiscal year 26, appropriate the $188,000 from the fleet fund to upgrade the fire apparatus approved on May 6th, and authorize the city manager to execute the purchase change order. And lastly, approve the proposed staffing adjustment. If I could just wrap up with one more slide here before we turn it over to questions, we just wanted to remind everyone that our city budget documents and other information are available on our budget webpage. And then also, we have available our open finance transparency page that allows anyone to track our revenues and expenditures throughout the year, because this system is integrated with our ERP system and allows you to drill down on city revenues and expenditures in nearly real time. And we also look forward to presenting future budget presentations on the dates provided on the slide. So with that, our team is happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Libby. Thank you for that report. Council questions? Councilmember Hoer.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for this information. I just, a couple of questions, I believe. First of all, it's good that, I mean, I appreciate that we're not waiting until the mid-year budget to talk about this. It seems like some critical needs that have become necessary. So that's more of a comment. But under the, on slide five, you know, the local transition, transaction and use tax, the MMB, Measure MMB. So that's coming in for, you know, $5,943,000. What was it estimated when we went out to the voters to bring in?
It was originally estimated slightly lower, I believe, at $5.2 million. However, HDL, like after it passed, they redid their analysis and found the estimated now at $5.9 million.
Okay. The other thing that I read in the staff report about, so the short-term rental TOT, it's decreased, but it's understood due to a delinquent TOT remittance from one major short-term person. Are we, what's going on there?
Yeah, we are pursuing that, and it's been speaking with the city manager, city attorney's office, and looking at additional measures to even potentially revisit our ordinance and put a little more teeth to it.
Great.
We're looking at that, and we'll come back later.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe he's watching, and we'll pay tomorrow.
Pay up, man.
Mayor Pretend Franklin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And good job, good job, Libby.
Thank you.
On slide number 11, not to go into the sewer, but it said the sewer fund revenues are down. I forget, what is the trigger? How do we charge? Is it per, by the water that's used, or?
Yeah, so there are fixed charges and then consumption-based charges. Consumption-based charges as well as fixed charges.
Okay. And, and so it's down because there wasn't as much water used by the resident?
I mean, there are a lot of variables that go into it, but, and also sometimes the timing of our billing cycles can fall into one quarter or another quarter, so there are a lot of little things that could happen. But overall, yes, we believe that consumption was up, but the revenues were down compared to the prior year, so.
Consumption is up, the revenues are down. All right. And then going to slide 13. So we need to get this longer ladder truck and an additional cost of $594,000 because of the types of buildings that are being proposed. Is there a way that we can charge a fee to these developers to recover that cost?
We are looking at development impact fees that will be coming to the Finance Subcommittee in December, and then to council early in 2026.
Okay, great, because that just seems fair. And I think that is all for me for right now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Shreem.
Well done, thank you. Well done, Libby. I do have also a question on the fire. I want to give Fire Chief Jesse some camera time.
Absolutely.
So, you know, this is, you came to us in September with this, with this need for this vehicle, and it's a four-year build-out. And I just want to say I appreciate the fact that you noticed this early on and took proactive action because if you don't do this now, we can't actually do much with it later on. Maybe it could be another five, four, five months, or we would have been like, all right, we already started the full build. So I appreciate you recognizing that, you know, and making this quick adjustment. I also appreciate Finance using the fleet fund to cover it and not impact the fund at the quarterly, you know, update. So is the truck going to look as it's in the picture? Is it like a two-piece? Like, I don't know what the terminology is, but we've always had single, like, you tell me, you know what I'm saying.
So yes, it will look very similar to the one in the picture. That's a tractor-drawn aerial ladder, also referred to sometimes as a tiller truck. And so the big difference compared to what we currently have is it does have that articulating portion, like you would see like a tractor-drawn trailer. It gives the opportunity for us to kind of jackknife in a little bit closer so we can get closer to buildings, and it allows for an outstanding turn radius for us to be able to maneuver around versus a regular straight stick ladder portion that has that difficulty making those turns. That's why you have that seat in the very back that allows for that rear turning, basically the Seinfeld episode.
You're going to have line out the door if kids wanted to sit back.
Or adults.
The push-in on this is going to be, you know.
Yes, it's one of the best positions in the fire service, being a tiller driver.
So is there any issues? I know it's probably tighter, tighter, turning radius. Will this be at fire station one or two?
It'll be at two.
Okay, so you won't have to worry about kind of that Vallardmore roundabout.
It has a, yes, fantastic turn radius, fantastic.
Awesome, all right, that's all I have for you.
All right, thank you.
So Libby, a couple more questions. Going back to business licensing, you, it doesn't have to be now. It could be maybe you bring it back with the mid-year budget. But you mentioned something about the discoveries portion of it, not, not just the regular business licensing operation. The discovery is something that we utilized HDL to do. But just taking out the discovery portion and looking at it, you know, regular business license operations, the regular business operations. I'd like to see where we are with outsourcing business licensing numbers versus non-outsourcing. Meaning outside of discovery, like separate the discovery because that's a complete separate portion?
Yes, I would call that a separate program.
Yeah.
But I guess what I paused on was outsourcing business licensing. I just wanted to share, our team is still very much heavily involved. All, we have a businesslicense@manhattanbeach.gov email address that comes directly to our team. They're working with HDL every day. So it's, I just didn't want to get, anyone to get the impression that we've just completely outsourced the program.
Right, but they're doing, they're doing the billing, the delinquent notices, the collections, the taking of the payments.
Well, yes, through the online system, yes.
Right, but they're doing all, the entire process, and we're just taking on?
Through our direction.
Okay, glad to see the water fund coming back up. That's always good. And let's see what else I have. And then as far as, you know, just again, a comment, you know, any, I feel any staffing adjustments should come at mid-year. That's just a comment, not direction. I just feel like we just passed the budget not too long ago. And the quarterly budget report, I feel, should be just an update on the first three months of activity. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Councilmember. Libby, just for you first, thank you for your report. Everything was comprehensive and helpful. It's hard with just the first quarter information to come up with a larger narrative, a larger trend. But this council, I think, like most Americans, have been concerned about tariffs, the international order, what it's going to mean for our economy. We're not necessarily seeing some of our worst fears borne out, but are there trends that we can take away from just? fears borne out, but are there trends that we can take away from just this first quarter data?
Well, that's where we just met with HDL regarding our business license, or I'm sorry, sales tax meeting yesterday. But due to the lag in a lot of our revenues for sales tax, TOT, we do get that information a little later. So that's kind of one issue, too. However, what they were indicating yesterday, which, so yesterday they shared with us data from the second quarter of 2025, so a little more recent than what you're seeing here. But that's where they were saying that they're starting to see some downward trends in the fuel and service stations and general consumer goods. So they are, they did indicate that they're starting to see some signs there. But again, our next meeting will likely be in January, so we'll have a little more information with the mid-year report.
I want to be careful, because we can be very existential about this and constantly see shadows where there's light. But we have another matter coming up where there's additional funding requested. And I'm not quite sure what the takeaway is from the first quarter data, which of course is only a snapshot, only a portion of the full year. And as you indicated, we don't get some of the revenue streams until later in fiscal year. So I'll ask you one more time, is there any other trend we can take away now coupled with what some of the data points are showing with preview of the second quarter?
Yeah, I'd say it's still a little too soon to tell. So yes, I would prefer to give more information with the mid-year report when we at least have the first six months of data to look at.
Mainly the mid-year report, which is coming in February.
Yes.
Thank you. And to pick up on a point made by councilmember Sheruian, explain why staff is coming to council now with this request for the adjustment in personnel and the human resources department. Is there an outstanding need now which would justify the need?
Sure. I'll defer that question to our human resources director, Lisa Jenkins, if that's okay.
Goodness.
Hi. Good evening, council. Thank you for the question. In response to the question about the staffing adjustment, I think you saw from the pie that was up there, human resources is the smallest portion. We have eight full-time employees, and that number has remained static since 2015. We have been able to supplement with some professional-level part-time staffing over the years. And the ability to adjust throughout the year is very helpful, both to keep up with the demands of the organization and also to remain agile to address retention considerations. And so that's the reason that the request is coming now versus in the budget, which we start working on in January essentially for the next year's budget. So sometimes it's just the timing of when the staffing adjustment would come into play and be considered.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
My other questions were going to be what councilmember Sheruian already asked and may note of with regard to the chief. Thank you, Chief Alexander, for noting our need to, at this point, to get a longer ladder. And I was also curious where it was going to park, but you've answered the question, so I just want to acknowledge again your leadership. I think that's it. Other councilmembers, any questions at this point? If not, we'll open this item up to public comment, but any member of the public in chambers care to address this item? I can tell that this is a hot topic, seeing no one in council chambers. Martha, is anybody online that would care to address this topic?
No request on Zoom.
Case closed. Public comment. Turn to council. Colleagues. Councilmember Howard.
Well, I was going to make a motion. Mr. City Attorney, I don't have to make a motion to receive the report, do I?
That's correct. And you can make one motion to accept staff's recommendation on B, C, and D, which is the appropriation of funds, the purchase change order, and the staffing adjustment, or you could keep them separate.
Okay, so I do want to say that I appreciate my colleagues' questions and the question about why now with staffing. And I'm satisfied with our Director of Human Resources' answer. And again, echo everybody, thank you, chief, for noticing. Also, you look a little gleeful about that tiller seat. So, no, it's, I was struck by, it's not just going to serve these new taller structures that we are anticipating and that are coming. It's actually going to have, be a really effective engine for other jobs. So with that, I would move to appropriate $188,144 from the fleet fund balance to upgrade the replacement of fire apparatus approved, authorize the city manager to execute the purchase change order, and approve the proposed staffing adjustment.
Great. And I see that motion has been seconded by councilmember Franklin. For my own personal comment, I just simply wanted to echo what Mayor Pretend Franklin mentioned in passing, and that is, it was confirmed by the city manager that staff is exploring fees that would be applicable to these large multi-tenant residential projects that are coming our way, not by our own discretion here on council. We're being required to approve these projects ministerially, and that we are exploring the feasibility of fees for the developers of these projects to help pay so that we have the ability to respond when there are urgent circumstances. So with that, I will be supporting the motion.
Well said.
All right. Any other further council comments? Call for the vote, please.
Motion passes. Five zero.
Thank you. Colleagues, we're ready to go forward. Let me break. Okay, let's go. Item number 12, consideration of a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2025 to '26 Chamber of Commerce work plan agreement, future lease payments for a new lease associated with the office space utilized by the Chamber of Commerce, and receipt of fiscal year 2024-25 work plan report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Patty Matson, Senior Management Analyst in our Management Services Department. Tonight, we're going to cover a few items regarding the Chamber of Commerce. I'll begin with a presentation, and you'll also hear from the chamber's president and CEO, Jill Lampkin, after I'm done. So the objectives for this evening are to discuss the Chamber of Commerce's proposed fiscal year 25-26 work plan agreement and determine the city's funding commitment, consider entering into a new lease for the chamber's current office space, and determine the appropriate lease payments. And lastly, you receive and file the chamber's final work plan report for their activities from fiscal year 24-25. By way of background, historically, the city has provided partial funding for the chamber's initiatives that serve to support businesses and the community and promote economic vitality and enhance quality of life. In years past, the city has provided varying degrees of funding to the chamber. And as an example, in fiscal years 2014 and 2015, the city committed to $100,000. And in fiscal year '24, it was $36,585. And last year, it was $29,585. The chamber has provided their proposed work plan for fiscal year '25-26 for your consideration. And regarding the city's lease with the chamber, the chamber is currently utilizing office space in a city-owned building, and this building also includes the post office and city offices. The current lease was entered into in 2012 at a rate of $1 per year and is now under a month-to-month structure. Additionally, based on an older agreement, the city has provided office space to the chamber at little to no cost since at least 1989. And staff is proposing that city council consider entering into a new long-term lease with the chamber, but request city council's direction on the appropriate amount for future lease payments, which we will discuss. Regarding the budget, staff budgeted $40,000 for the fiscal year 25-26 agreement. However, the chamber is proposing a work plan and scope of services valued at $85,000. Considering the budgeted amount, staff requested that the chamber provide a list of their proposed activities by priority. They have broken their funding into three priority levels for council's consideration, which we'll go over on the next few slides. If council would like to provide funding to the chamber beyond the budgeted $40,000, an additional appropriation would be required, and staff would return during the mid-year budget update report with that amount. Additionally, after considering the proposal by the chamber, council could direct staff to include additional funding for the chamber during next fiscal year's budget discussions. Beginning with priority funding level one, this level is valued at the already budgeted amount of $40,000 and would require no further appropriation. A few of those items have been included in previous agreements, like the state of the city, half of the subscription cost for visitor analytic software, and the Young Entrepreneurs Academy investor panel. In the past, the chamber has also held seminars or forums to aid with business education and engagement. And this fiscal year, they're proposing a business license tax forum, as well as an economic forum regarding some of the major sporting events coming to Los Angeles. You will also see a destination guide listed that would be created and distributed to strategic locations. It would feature local attractions and tourism-related information for visitors to the city. And lastly, there is an activity labeled as economic development services. The full proposed amount for this activity is $24,000. However, that funding amount has been broken up throughout the three priority levels, and you'll see it listed on each of the slides as we go through them. The chamber provides that the proposed economic development services not only includes deliverables such as hosting workshops, seminars, and quarterly business engagement meetings, but also allows for flexibility to react to any emerging needs throughout the year. Priority funding level two showcases additional events and activities. It's valued at $75,000, and it also incorporates the items from level one into the total. It includes services centered around business retention and attraction, including business recognitions, ribbon cuttings and anniversaries, and new business welcome packages. It also includes funding for new resident welcome packages, the purchase of city logo merchandise to go in them, and the development and production of a relocation guide to be provided to those moving to Manhattan Beach. Other events and activities include social media marketing to promote community events and encourage tourism, as well as community fairs and expos based on relevant topics such as health and wellness or financial planning. Priority funding level three includes a few additional events and activities, and it is valued at the full amount of $85,000 and incorporates the items from both levels one and two into the total. This level includes the remaining amount for economic development services and production and distribution of a visitor map that features local attractions, businesses, parking, and community highlights. It also includes funding for an internships and summer job prep program where the chamber would host a workshop to teach high school and college students how to write resumes, apply for jobs, and prepare for interviews. So this covers the proposed funding levels from the chamber, and staff does recommend priority funding level one as it is the current budgeted amount. However, council may decide to appropriate more funding for additional activities, and staff will ensure the final agreement reflects that chosen amount. To begin discussions regarding the lease, the city currently leases approximately 750 square feet of office space to the chamber. They also have four dedicated parking stalls. The city currently covers maintenance fees for the building, which includes items such as landscaping, HVAC, janitorial, and building insurance. Staff sought out current market rate data for office spaces in and near the downtown area from a local real estate agency, and rates range from $4 up to $11.60 per square foot per month. Some of the estimates received included that some of the tenants pay additional fees to cover property taxes, building insurance, and maintenance costs on top of the base rent. Considering the current market rate data, as well as the rate the post office pays for their lease, it is estimated that the market value for the building could be anywhere from $2.55 to $4.50 per square foot per month. Additionally, market rates for parking stalls in the area are about $150 to $250 per month, which is anywhere from $7,200 to $12,000 a year. Considering the market rate data, as well as parking, maintenance, and insurance costs associated with the building, staff estimates that the total value of the leased space is approximately $34,084 to $56,434 annually. The market value of the lease could be considered in-kind support that adds to the value of the city's agreement with the chamber, as the chamber does provide certain public services to attract, promote, and market local businesses, which in turn strengthens our local economy and produces tax revenue. Staff recommends that the city council provide direction regarding the appropriate amount for future lease payments, as well as the length of the new lease term. And the last aspect of the presentation is the chamber's fiscal year 24-25 work plan report. Per the previous work plan agreement, the chamber is required to submit an annual report detailing overall project management and achievement of their outlined goals. This past year, the chamber completed all of their objectives except for one of the two planned business education seminars. And staff recommends that the city council receive and file this And so to conclude, all staff recommendations related to this agenda item are as follows: provide direction regarding the appropriate funding level commitment, adopt resolution number 25-0131 approving the proposed 25-26 work plan agreement, discuss and provide direction regarding lease payments and a potential term for the purposes of entering into a new lease for the office space utilized by the chamber, authorize the city manager to finalize the remaining terms, and execute the agreement as amended by city council, as well as execute the new lease. And finally, receive and file the Chamber of Commerce's fiscal year 24-25 work plan report. So that ends my presentation. And as I mentioned, Jill Lampkin will now be providing a brief presentation, and will both be available for questions.
Oh, wow. I get to control the buttons. Ooh, I've never done that before. Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Pretend, City Council. Jill Lampkin from the Chamber of Commerce. Thanks so much for listening to all of this tonight. I know that after listening to a lot of other budget talk, my digits go in a lot, the decimal point moves in quite a few, quite a few spots. Oh, did I go the wrong way? I went the wrong way. Okay, so what's new? As you know, I just started in this job at the end of June and already mixing things up over there. We've reduced expenses by about $35,000 a year. We've completely redone all of our systems. Our new website is completely user-friendly. We've updated from the 1983 technology that we had to something that's new, which is fantastic. We changed our membership structure to allow for businesses to choose the level of service that they want versus the number of employees that they have, which never made any sense to me. We have a really robust weekly email that's going out to membership. It includes a lot of business content and public policy. And this is one of the things where I really see a strength that I have and have really kind of developed through my work in downtown, is I have created such strong relationships with all of the department chairs, and I meet regularly with them, and it allows me to provide regular updates to all of the businesses in town about things that are happening, which is great. We do have about 9,000 subscribers on our email database, so it goes to a whole lot of people. The other good thing is I can say that our membership has increased by 30% since we switched over to our new system on August 6. I will tell you, I am starting out from a great deficit from where we were when I first arrived, but we are definitely on the right track and looking to continue to grow that throughout the rest of the year. I have also engaged with regional advocacy partners that I think can help us strengthen our business community. I am very involved in the SBACC to make sure that we are engaged with county and state policy, and we are working with our board of directors to create recommendations and support policy when we think it is beneficial to our businesses. I also serve as a co-chair on the Small Business Committee for LA County Biz Fed. So going forward, we as a board kind of picked three major areas of focus. The first is economic development, business promotion, and education programs. The second is visitor attraction and experience, plus a community welcome program, and we'll get to that in a little bit. And the third is community enhancement. And that generally includes the things that council has found, has asked us to offer over the years, things that they find beneficial to the community. So economic development, business promotion, and education. The biggest thing that I can say about this is I am learning more every day about what this encompasses, because it isn't just a list of deliverables. And I can give you a couple of examples. When I very first started this job, I had a meeting with the general manager- When I very first started this job, I had a meeting with the general manager of the West Drift Hotel who told me that they were losing out on revenue because they were, our film permit approval process was not, it was lengthier than other communities, and asked me if I could help talk to the city about how our policy differs and what we could do to expedite that process. I'm excited that Public Works is going to be presenting, not Public Works, Parks and Rec is going to be presenting a film in LA potential agreement going forward because I think that will really help our businesses. Recently, over the weekend, I was contacted by the McFarland family of rights because of some of the larger-scale businesses that are moving into downtown and asking to start to look at ways that other coastal communities have worked together to write legislation or write it into their codes, how you can protect the small quaint atmosphere that we have with smaller boutiques and restaurants. So, and I can't always plan for what that is, so I'm saying some of these funds, I mean, some of the items that are covered in Economic Development might not always be explicitly listed, but it doesn't mean that I'm not working on things that are related to Economic Development. Oh, another one that just came in this week was the plastic bag legislation. I was just asked to bring that out to all of our members as well because there's, starting in January, there will be no reusable plastic bags allowed, so it will only be paper bags. So, big situation with that. Helping to create some marketing campaigns to support our businesses, that's one of the things that I think has been missing for the business community as a whole. It's something that I think the downtown district has done really well in the past, but we haven't really had any combined marketing campaigns that really are focused on how we can drive business and tourism to our community to drive economic development. And then the education piece of it is so important, and things are, like I said, things are coming to me every week. I learned through our partners at the LAX Coastal Chamber that there is a program that's called Small Business Enterprise Certification, and this is a really cool program with all of the big, major sporting events that we have coming up. In order for any small business to qualify or to bid on any of those products or projects, you have to be small business certified. And we have a consultant that will come in. We can start our first cohort in January. We'll do it in conjunction with the LAX Coastal Chamber for the first time so that we are partnering and learning how to do this. And then going forward, that is a four-week program that we will offer as an ongoing service to the businesses in our community. Major event promotion, and I know that there are differing feelings about how we want to handle this in our city. The one thing that I can say is we know that people are going to come. When we had the Super Bowl, people came. When Taylor Swift performed, people came. And so I want to make sure that we're thinking about it in advance to be prepared for how we want to do it, because we want to make it a positive experience for the business community, but we also want to make sure that it's positive for residents. I recently had the opportunity to attend an economic forum where the president of the LA Tourism, the president of LA Tourism spoke, and the thing that he stressed about FIFA World Cup is that he feels like all of our communities are greatly underestimating this. He said, "One international visitor equals two and a half domestic travelers, and 90% of the visitors that are coming internationally to these games will not have a ticket to the event." They are coming to be World Cup adjacent, and they are looking for things that they can do that will be supporting that feeling. And so I think if we are smart and we plan ahead and we can, another fun fact that I learned was our AYSO region in the beach cities is the second largest in the nation. And so the soccer community here is quite strong, and we have a couple of professional soccer players that live here. I think we could probably come up with a good community-based program that could help us satisfy the needs of the residents while also attracting visitors to things that could improve us economically through that event. I think a thing that we need right away, I met with a consultant last week about reinventing our destination guide and creating a digital map. We have had paper maps in the past. Who wants to carry around a paper map? Nobody. But there are some really cool digital maps that are out there that I think could be a fantastic asset that we could create, and I would like to update our destination guide because it's woefully outdated and we really need to focus on some of these big events. The great thing is that we do have Placer AI, which is an analytics, visitor analytics database that I can use, and that would really help me target where the destination guides are placed based on where the visitors are coming from. In the past, I was very surprised to find that it was just a mathematical equation of how many beds were at a hotel, and that's how many destination guides they received. There was really no analysis that went into where the visitors come from and where we should be depositing those destination guides. And then the last piece of this is a new resident welcome. And although at first glance, it may sound odd coming from the Chamber of Commerce, we know that this was wildly successful when we had all of the fire victims relocate to Manhattan Beach, and the business community and the city came together and we put together welcome packets. And the outpouring from the community of like gratitude and just amazement that a city cared so much about new residents coming in, it really resounded with me. And I, at the Chamber, get a lot of walk-ins, and I had several people after those packages were distributed come into the Chamber to talk about how it made them feel about the community. And I thought, you know, it wouldn't take a lot for us to do that, and it would do two things. In that messaging, I think you also emphasize the strength of what our business community is in our small businesses. And so not only are you welcoming the new residents, you're explaining what the culture of our community is in supporting local business, supporting small, creating a business community that is able to contribute back to the schools and, you know, not big-box shopping, but really creating the loyalty to the small businesses that make our community special. Oh, I'm trying to turn it off. I want to go. And the last one is just community enhancement. These are things that you guys are all familiar with, the Young Entrepreneurs Academy, which I know there are probably going to be fistfights over who gets to do the Investor Panel because everyone seems to love that, community fairs. And then I wanted to clarify the Intern and Summer Job Preparation Program, not just something that we would be helping students with. I actually want to be able to do this with the Workforce Investment Board, with El Camino, and with our businesses, because I think this is the biggest piece where we're missing. We don't have an easy way for individual businesses to apply for any of these positions or go out and find interns. We know that they exist, and if we can create some sort of relationship with those agencies where we can provide almost a ready-made internship program, it could vastly increase the number of internships that are provided to kids in the summer. So the big thing that I want to emphasize is, in terms of funding, I understand that this could look like I'm asking for money from our resident taxpayers, but I'd really like to reposition that, to think about it as requesting a small percentage of the dollars that we collect through business license tax and transient occupancy taxes, and reinvesting those dollars into the sectors that generate those revenues. Right now, they go into the general fund, and it's not that we don't need those funds for roads and streets and sidewalks and all of those great things, but a small percentage of them, it would be great if we could do that. I also wanted to show that the city funding for the Chamber over time has been diminishing. I am the first one to stand here and say I completely understand why that may have been based on past performance. I am asking at this point that, at some point, you all know me and, you know, I am committed to being an accountable partner, and I hope that you can trust me and my commitment to the city and to the business community. Business license taxes in 2025 brought in $5 million. Transit occupancy tax brought in $7 million. That's a total of $12 million that were not paid by residents. Those were paid by the businesses and by the visitors to our community. The maximum I'm asking for right now is $85,000. That's 0.7% of what that is. And that reinvestment would help our businesses, that would help them feel represented because they're paying into our city, and then we could provide, utilize some of those business tax to provide the services that they are requesting. And that's it. I mean, I know that was probably longer than all of you want. And of course, I'm here to answer questions, and I know some of you already sent me questions, so I brought some stuff in case people had those questions they want to ask. Oh, do you want to do public comment, or do you want to ask me questions first?
We'll ask staff for questions, or you. Yes, V B, thank you, Jill. Thank you very much.
You mean to just wait?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Okay, council, thank you for your presentation. Thank you to Patty as well. Councilmember's questions for Patty and/or for Ms. Lampkin. Councilmember attorney?
Thank you. Thank you to you, Patty and Jill, for those great presentations. I just want to be transparent that I am the representative from the city, and I sit on the Chamber as a committee member. And so I'm familiar with the process that has gotten us to where we are now, but I do have a question for Patty. Patty, in the past, have we used an economic development, you know, someone within our city staff for public, for economic development, whether in the director or as staff?
There was a position briefly, there was an Economic Development Director. I forget. I'm sorry, Economic Development Manager. That was 2017? It was quite a few years ago.
And for how, do you know how long that person or that position was open? Was that the last, what the duration of that was?
Yes. I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
And do we know, when that position went away, did we have anybody take over some of those?
No.
Duties?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And then I have a question, a couple of questions for Jill, if you could please. Could you, thank you. Could you please share with us your revenues from dues, from your member duties?
Yes, and thank you for the question. Let me just look here at what I, I brought so many little pieces of paper and, okay, so right now, our annual recurring membership revenue, we have 190, well, these are questions a couple of you asked, so I'm just going to go ahead and put them out there. Currently, we have 190 members. We have 286 membership accounts, which means we had a lot more members in the past, and so I have my work cut out to do, to get those folks back into the Chamber. Our annual recurring membership revenue for those 190 members is $95,000 at this point. I have budgeted my membership revenue goal for this year to be $132,400 with an estimated revenue overall to get us to a break-even point of $362,800.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work.
And how many employees does Chamber have?
I have zero employees. I have one part-time contract employee.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shireva?
Thank you, Jill. Really nice presentation. Good to see you. A couple of questions. So you mentioned you reduced $35,000. How did you, what was, who was, what was?
So we had, there were a lot of contracts and vendors that had been on the books, often duplicating services, that had just been on forever and ever, and contracts came through and renewed. I mean, it's something good when a fresh set of eyes comes in. The membership system that we had, we went from it being about $800, $850 a month to the new system, which is $60 a month. We let, we, there was a postage service that we had because of the previous newspaper that was published, that was a monthly service that we had that was quite expensive. I mean, it was just, there was a whole lot of things. I mean, we had a huge multi-line phone system that had been involved. I mean, like, it just, over, you know, many, many decades of duplicitous contracting.
Yeah, I'm just always impressed to hear these were, you know, reductions, they were expenditure reductions. It's great to hear. So how do you, you're budgeted for $132 this year in revenues. You mentioned your goal is $362. How are you, how will you get from $132 to $362? I mean, outside of memberships, what other revenue sources are going to come, or what, if you can?
Great question. We get, a lot comes in sponsorships, and that would be from corporate sponsors, but I will say, one of the things that I really am working hard to do is try to find that level of membership that makes sense for business. You'll forgive me for a second to give you an example. In the past, in the past structure, businesses' membership were based on the number of employees that they had. So I'm going to give you Mike Sislas, the Sislas Group, as an example. So each of their restaurants, which had, you know, 100-plus employees, would have X amount of membership associated with that. Well, their business really didn't need the services provided to all of those 100 people in their restaurant. What they were really looking for was business liaison services and some marketing opportunities. And so what I was able to do was instead say, "Let's get you a different membership that's actually going to be a little bit more expensive for you altogether, but it's one package, and we can define what you're paying for now." So we have defined marketing plans for them, so it's just changing the way the Chamber model has worked. So I'm looking to increase revenues with membership in terms of the types of memberships that people are creating. So events are another way. So we're looking at the events. There were not many events that were hosted in the last few years, and there are a couple of big ones that we are proposing, and so those would also be revenue generating.
Great, thank you. A couple more questions. Level Two Funding, you have Economic Development Services for $12,000.
Yes.
And that's, again, not a full year. It's a prorated year because it's between now and the end of June. So what can you get done with $12,000? It doesn't seem like it's, you know...
There's so much I can do. So a lot of that, and it's broken down more in the Exhibit A.
Yeah, take a look, but just high level, is that, is that a realistic number?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, some of the things I think that are important, we've got this, Libby and I met with the finance team to talk about all the business license tax changes and code revisions that we're going to be doing. That's a huge impact, so I think that's going to take a lot of time and effort to organize, you know, a lot of input around that. We are looking to partner with the LAX Coastal Chamber on an economic development event that would be focused on the major sporting events. And that's another thing that I wanted to point out, too, is that I really want to share that I have been reaching out to my counterparts in other cities because we're 35,000 people, and, but yet, you guys know, as a city, our residents expect this level of service, even though we're a small town. The businesses are the same. And so I'm trying to figure out, how can I do things that are of the level that our businesses would expect, but that I can't fund all myself? And so trying to partner with my fellow agencies, and Nina's been actually great about that in helping me get connected with people in some of the other South Bay communities.
Thank you. That's all the questions. That for you?
Okay.
I have a question for the city attorney. Current rent is very low. Any in-kind services, what's the nexus between the city and the Chamber and, you know, talking about gift of public funds?
Yes, the staff report addresses that in...
But verbally, like, for everybody to hear.
So the concept of the gift of public funds is, if you're... So the concept of the gift of public funds is, if you're providing a gift of public funds, not to be redundant, which means that you're not getting any public benefit. And so occasionally, a city will, will come to us and say, we want to give money to this group. And our question is always, you have to figure out what the public benefit is. And so in this case, the, as the staff report states, there's a tremendous public benefit to encourage businesses, which enhances revenue. We get more taxes. So that's a public benefit to the public.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Patty, I have some questions first for you and other colleagues. Do you have questions?
Nope.
Okay. Patty, so just to clarify, can we go to slide four? Can you pull that up?
Yes.
I'd like to better understand the options we have this evening as a council. So option one is consistent with the budget we just approved, and we're actually, it's more than just approved, because we're almost halfway through the fiscal year. We could allocate the $40,000 that has been budgeted for the chamber with this tier one, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But I wanted to better understand what the other options are, particularly with other descriptives where I know for myself, I need more information before I can vote for them. So help me understand what our next opportunities are if the council majority does not want to tonight award the additional, I call them tranches, but two levels of funding, when we have another opportunity to further review what these options are.
If city council would like to, you could direct us to potentially include additional funding for next year's work plan agreement, and we can bring that to our budget discussions for fiscal year 26, 27.
I heard also a reference to the mid-year. What would, what would that discussion be about?
If we wanted to appropriate additional funds outside of the $40,000 that we've already appropriated, we would need to bring back that additional appropriation at the mid-year budget update.
Okay. Next, let's talk about the lease. I think that's discussed in slide eight.
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to better understand the total potential cost here, the, appreciate council member Sherillian's exchange with the city attorney to explain how we're investing in our chamber, to invest in our businesses. But we need to be realistic about the scale of how much we're supporting the chamber by with fair market rents. So can you confirm what the, the monthly rent could be at the minimum and what that might be annually? And then I want to talk about the parking spaces.
Sure. So at a minimum, if it's just for the square footage of, for the building space, the lease space, that would be $2.55 to approximately $4.50 per square foot. So that could be anywhere from $1,900 to about $3,300 monthly. And that would actually be $22,950 annually, up to $40,500 annually.
Has staff researched whether other cities provide office space for their chambers?
I don't have any specific examples at this time.
Okay. With regard to the parking spaces in that lot, which also serves the Jocelyn Center, our older adult community is continually frustrated with the limited number of parking spaces there. So certainly, that would be an option for council to explore, perhaps allowing two of those spaces to be added back. I mean, certainly, that's where I'm leaning, because there is huge demand, enormous demand of older adults. Let me see what else I have. I think that's it for now. Jill?
Sure.
First and foremost, before I ask you some tougher questions, too, I just want to, again, compliment you for the job you're doing with the chamber.
Thank you.
How much you're revitalizing it, and how much I've heard from businesses in the community that specifically point to the job that you've done in the short time you've been there, and how much improvement you've made.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
But this whole discussion of funding for the chamber has been tough for prior councils I've served on. This is deja vu all over again. And I wanted to give you a chance, at least to respond to some of the larger-picture questions. And that is, to the extent that we are stewards for taxpayer money, deciding what taxpayers should underwrite versus businesses. And one of the metrics that was used, but is very difficult to measure, is the return on investment. That is to say, to the extent that the chamber is doing something that serves the community, there's taxation that comes back, but it's a limited amount of tax, depending upon whether it's restaurant, whether it's retail. Obviously, there's a greater sales tax with retail.
Well, $5 million came back in business license taxes. So we know that that is a source of revenue.
So here's the question, and forgive that long-winded sort of intro, is, to what extent have you sought to measure with some of these specific programs proposed for Tier Two and Three, how much of a potential return they could add?
That is a great question. And we could work on that in terms of, I think, things like the, you know, some of the traveling, the destination guide, visitor, changes in visitor behavior, use of a digital map. I mean, I can, I can tell you that the traffic on our website alone has increased. We have almost 20,000 visitors a month. And it was about 6,000 when I, when I started in the position, and it's already increased to 20,000 a month. So I, I think that, I mean, some of those things are hard to quantify, to say that, you know, we've almost, more than tripled the number of visitors that we have coming to the chamber. I think people are starting to see us as a resource again, which is great. I, maybe membership increases would be another way to measure that, that if people are continuing to increase the number of members that we bring in, then that would show a value that, that we are providing to businesses in the community.
Okay. The hardest question, which has been asked your predecessors, which is why the city should be paying for some of these promotional efforts when it's businesses that benefit, recognizing that we want a vital business community?
Sure.
But why the city as opposed to businesses for some of these initiatives?
Well, the businesses actually do pay a lot. It's, this isn't an inexpensive place to do business. Our, our business license taxes are higher than other areas. And in order to be competitive, we are hearing quite regularly that it's easy to go elsewhere. I also want to, one of the things that I have talked to our board about is creating a commercial real estate and development committee, where I have someone that is proactively out in the community, looking at where we have opportunities in terms of large, large space leasing, and what we can do to incentivize people to come to the community. So I'm really trying to be on the forefront of looking at, how do we get more businesses into the community, and what can we offer them that's different and better in Manhattan Beach, why they should come here?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mayor Protem, Frank?
Sure. Hey, Jill. Good to hear from you.
Thank you.
Is, is there a possibility to go through the line item here of Level One, Level Two?
Sure.
Maybe look at Level Three, and to see if there's ways to, you know, reach out to your membership for some assistance with these services? Maybe pro bono, maybe, you know, at a discount? Pair back on some of the, you know, on some of the events? You know, is, is there just wiggle room in here for some of this? I know you've looked over the numbers.
Yeah. I'm, I'm giving you, I mean, the, the lowest number that I feel comfortable with. I mean, I, I met with Nina for a long time about this, and went back and forth. We spent a great deal of time with Teline and Patty, with Jessica Vincent, who's our board chair, talking about all of these things. We, originally, it was, it was $100,000. And we got it down to 85, and with 75, I could eke out. But, I mean, there are so many things that I think haven't been done in this community in so long, that an additional, an additional bit of input from the city would be tremendously helpful if we're, I'm going to achieve some of these lofty goals that I have.
Okay. I, I mean, like, so I just circled, you know, the most expensive ones, like visitor analytics, $8,000. Is that?
That's Placer AI. AI, that's, Placer AI, that's the, you guys have split that typically with the chamber in the past. It's an annual subscription.
Okay. So, and, so how do we get that data? I mean, is it through credit card usage? Is it through?
It's cell phone data. It's based on your, the data collected from your location on your cell phone. So we can tell where, it's called where your phone rests at night, meaning where your home location is. And then it tracks you where you are and what you're doing. So, yeah, which is how I could, I can, I can tell you, we are expecting, we, last year, we had 2,500 people at the North Manhattan Holiday Stroll, and we had 40,000 people at the Holiday Fireworks. So I can tell you those numbers definitively now, because we actually have data that I can use to give you that information.
Mayor Protem, we also use Placer AI for our outdoor dining task force, and the, some of the analyses we did with that effort, because it's able to tell us, are people getting to the restaurants by bike, by foot, by car? It's able to gauge some of that. And so we used Placer AI for that effort as well.
Okay. Let's see. So, so looking at the rent, so the $22,950 is an annual at $2.55 a square foot?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, went through that. So, and then the parking stalls would be $7,200 a year? I got 150 times four. 150 per month?
You win.
Times four, times 12 is 7,300?
That is the current market rate data we have for parking stalls, is 150 to $250 per stall per month.
Okay, so 7,200 a year.
Up to 12,000. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So it's about a total of $30,000 between the, the lowest rent and the parking, at market rates.
If you were doing the building and parking, yeah, that would be, on the lower end, it would be 30,150 up to 52,500.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Howard?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions. I have lots of comments and lots of thoughts. And first of all, that really was a terrific presentation by both of you. I think the staff, a good staff report answers, you know, provides you all the options of things that you need to know to make a good, you know, judgment. And I, you know, Jill, we haven't talked prior to tonight, but that, that really was a killer, killer kind of encapsulation of what you plan to do, what you aim to do, as we say back in the Midwest. The parking stalls, our mayor said something intriguing to me, which was, you know, could you go from four to two? And not, for me, not so much for the, the value and whatever, but yeah, it, I, I always, I often go there, and I'm like, you know, it's a chamber, and I'm such a rule follower. I can't do it, you know?
You're the only one, because they're almost always full. I sometimes have to come in and go over to Jocelyn and ask somebody to move out of a space.
Yeah, no. So, but could you, could you give up, too? Would you?
So, yeah, I think if, I think we could. The, the one thing that I would say is that, you know, the, the goal is to not have just me and a part-time person. The goal would be to have more employees, and so that would be great. Now, if we need to do, like, maybe a shared situation, that's fine. I mean, it really seems to be mostly on Tuesdays that it's the biggest issue. And, I mean, I'm in conversation with them a lot about this. So I, I, I mean, people park in it all the time, and I don't care if we're not using it. That's not a deal to me.
Right. But it would be, it would, so I think I hear what you're saying, but, because it could be very helpful to us, and, yeah, for those who don't follow the rules. You mentioned sort of your membership or your involvement with BizPad and LAX Chamber and different ones. Are those fees recognized in here?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because that's, that to me seems like you're really leveraging, you know, like you say, a bigger chamber, people have been doing it for a long time. I, I actually really appreciate your levels and your, you know, the priority setting. I know.
I will give full credit to Teline and Patty for suggesting that, so thank you.
All right. Look at this. Look at these women.
I'm telling you, women working together.
Look at these women lifting each other up, right? I love it.
Sorry, Mayor.
No, no, it's all good. But, sorry, guys, you're wonderful, too, but whatever. I appreciate the levels. No, you really are. Let's see. There was something I was going to say. Oh, but, so what I wanted to say is, you started in August, June?
And June 21st.
But who's counting? So I know that it took a while. I mean, there's a little bit of frustration that, oh, wait, this isn't in part of the budget process, and we're coming after the fact, but it seems like there was an awful lot of, you know, dialing down to get to this level.
There was. And thank you, actually, for, for mentioning that, because in the beginning, I kept, bless Teline's heart for being so patient with me, because she kept going, we need it, we need it, we need it. And I was like, I don't feel equipped to come and have the information to ask at this point. And so I really did hold them off. And so I do take responsibility for the fact that, I mean, it was already after the budget, you know, went out anyway. But I, I did push it longer, just so that I had more information and could give you informed, you know?
Confident.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, no, I really appreciate that. That's super helpful. Thank you.
One other thing I wanted to note about the, the rent situation, and I understand that it is a wonderful, wonderful luxury that we, that we enjoy, and I am so thankful for the space, is that this is an agreement that's been in place since the 80s. And Bob Holmes was like, I think it was the early 80s. So, I mean, it's, it's, it really has a history of, and it's so convenient for me, because I can be back and forth to City Hall really easily. So whether that is good for you guys or not, I'm not sure. But it's really helpful to me, because, you know, I really do see this as a strong partnership. And so being able to pop back and forth across the street is tremendously helpful. And I will say that in the same year that this was, the last year that the lease was signed for the $1 a year was January of 2012. And in that same year, you also allocated $75,000 to the chamber. And the CPI indicator would put that at 107,471 today. So if you were willing to give the chambers $75,000 back in 2012, I think you're getting a great bargain this year.
That was going to be my, that, actually, I, I thought about asking a CPI question. I'm like, who's going to have that off the top of their head? Okay, great. Thank you.
And she didn't ask me that before. I just thought to do it.
I would talk to her. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shirei?
Well, councilmember attorney had something to say.
I just had a question on the, just a, on the lease.
Yes.
Prior to this, so the last time we had a lease in place was 2012, did you say, on the?
This lease began in 2012, and it went through 2022.
So they're 10-year period?
So it went month to month after that.
Okay.
And city manager, did you want to add something?
I concur.
Thank you. Councilmember Shirei?
Thank you. So supporting the chamber is not something new that the city has done. There's always been a nexus. It's always been some form of partnership. And I, I like the way that Jill Lampkin is tying it to business licensing, because in the past, you don't see it in the report, because it only goes to 2013, but my mind goes back to the early 2000s, when we used to give the chamber, the city gave the chamber a percentage, there was a, a formula, but a percentage of the annual business license tax. And it was, even back then, was closer above to six digits. So, so there's always been support, and, you know, I would, you know, like to continue to support it at some level, looking for, you know, further discussion and consensus. But I want to give Peter Kim some camera time. I have a question for him. Can you?
Sure.
Can you hold on just one moment? Madam City Manager? Because I can't answer.
Mayor, Mayor Lester, do you want to open the public hearing for?
Public comment?
Public comment. I think if councilmember Sherillian has a, a question for a member of the board?
Yes. He can do so, and then we'll open it up for public comment. But thank you for asking the question. It's, should we open this up for public comment? Of course, we're going to, but I believe this is councilmember's question. But thank you for clarifying. Please.
As a board member, I can answer this question.
Thank you. No, I just want to ask your, you know, opinion.
No, I just want to ask your, you know, opinion. You've been part of the Chamber for a while. You're, you're on the board and you were there, you know, years before and you're seeing transition or changes coming in. So what, what, what are you seeing happen that's exciting at the Chamber and that affects the community wide?
Well, having Jill Lampkin on board is like night and day. She brings a enthusiasm to the Chamber that we haven't seen in, I would say, since I've been there, which is well over 10 years. And I just think that with her vision and, you know, I'm gonna say my thing in the, in the public comments also, but, you know, we're only asking for 0.7% of what's coming in from businesses. So I think that's a little low, but again, you know, it's a starting point and I think that as, you know, we're, we're, we are in a symbiotic relationship with the, with the city, as you guys all know. And somewhere in there, we have to include the community also. So as a small business person, owner, the reason, and by the way, out of 190 Chamber members, I would say 70% are small businesses. And you ask, why do small businesses join Chambers? And the simple answer is to get more sales. Okay? And so we have to have some type of community involvement in this. I know there's other chambers in the state of California that have community memberships into chambers. That's something that we can explore down the line. Again, $85,000, $85,000 doesn't allow us to explore that. So those are some of the things that, you know, we've discussed as a board as far as going forward in that direction.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other council questions? Thank you. If not, open it up for public comment for up to two minutes.
I'll try to talk quick. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Lesser and members of the City Council and staff. You know me as Jessica Vincent, an employee previously working and serving the city of Manhattan Beach, also an external affairs manager at Chevron. I'm standing before you this evening honored and humble to be the Manhattan Beach Board Chair. On behalf of the Manhattan Beach Chamber Board and under the leadership of Jill Lampkin, who has demonstrated her reputation in the business community, I'd like you to consider increasing the investment in the Chamber and its strategic priorities. The reimagined Chamber, under Jill's leadership, enhances economic vitality, fosters community engagement, drives business and creates a more robust and balanced, friendly atmosphere in the city. While I understand that the city strives to find the balance and the needs of the residents and the, and tourism, the fabric and the backbone of the city is a thriving business community. The proposal before you this evening not only provides us with an opportunity to highlight Manhattan Beach as a business-friendly destination, especially in light of the upcoming sporting events coming to LA, it also serves to recruit new businesses and retain existing while improving the city's tax base from sales tax revenue. As the staff report depicted and dating back to the 80s, the funding from the city to the Chamber has significantly decreased over time. In addition, its approach has changed from a monthly payment based on the Chamber providing a multitude of economic development services, similar to what we're looking to do again today, to a fee-based sponsorship approach on delivering events to the business community. While these events definitely hold value, we are certainly not looking to discontinue them and we will continue to offer some of them, we, and revitalize others. I do urge you to recognize the Chamber not as, just as an event organizer, but as a vital civic partner, one that builds bridges between the city and the business community, drives economic growth and enhances the quality of life for residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Robyn Burn and thank you all for your service. Everyone, like I know this is, this is not easy. I wasn't planning on coming, but I am on the Chamber and I strongly, I've been on there for many, many years and I believe we have a champion, we have a leader, we have someone that can really develop businesses, the small businesses, the large businesses, with everything that's coming, and they are coming. I'm a big sports mom and champion. People are coming, so I believe we have built a board with Jill in place. She needs help, she really needs help, but we are smart. We will help the city, help them manage everything that's coming forward. It will benefit the city, the taxes, the, the revenue, like everything. We, we are, we're one team. We're one team and if we could please get a little support, it will go a long way, it will pay for itself and you'll, you'll see, you'll see the rewards. And I want to say we're, we're a marketing and caring Chamber. Like we have a heart, we know how to market, we know how to run businesses and we, we would love the city to support the Chamber. Thank you.
Hi. So speaking of community involvement, personally, if you, Chamber members can do us a favor and increase that budget from 85,000 to 105,000, and the reason is this, we would really, really appreciate reaching out to the community. There's 35,000 residents that are shopping elsewhere besides shopping local. Everybody says shop local, shop local. If the residents don't know much about the local community, how are they gonna shop local and bring more revenue to the city as well as to the businesses? Right now, we do not have a budget to reach out to those residents. A part-timer for $20,000 a year, we do have some data that we can actually reach out to every single of the 35,000 residents by email, by mail, whatnot, and get them involved so they can all each receive these newsletters. Because the only people who are getting the newsletters are businesses. What if those newsletters can go out to the community? How much would that benefit the Chamber as well as the city, as well as you? You all go to the events. How would you like to see residents at those events and interact with the residents? That's what we need to do. That's why I joined the Chamber. That's why, again, 70% of the 190%, 90 members joined the Chamber is to reach out to those residents. So if it's, I pray that, you know, it's within your conscious to possibly bump up the budget to 105,000 so that we can actually go out and reach out to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Anyone else in council chambers care to address this item? If not, Martha, is anybody on Zoom that cares to address this item?
No request on Zoom.
In which case I'll close public comment. Councilmember Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I appreciate it. I, I really wanted to make some comments. I, I do appreciate, I think it was Councilmember Shireen saying, looking forward to discussion. You know, I think we'll all have different ideas maybe on the levels, but I really want to make some comments to why I'll be supporting some, you know, I'll be supporting the Chamber. We did, as, we did use to fund the Chamber and I, I do love, Jill, that you brought up, you know, if, if in 2013 dollars, it was what, 97,000 or whatever, today it would be 107,000. When we stopped, there was, there was really some confusion in the community and within, you know, the council, like what are, what is the value that the Chamber's providing? And we really, we had asked for years, please provide us with a report of what you've done. Please show us how you've, you know, spent this money. And I don't know why that was hard to do, but we never really were satisfied with, you know, what came back. And so that was one reason that we were, we were having a hard time supporting it. And I do appreciate what you're saying tied to business licensing. This is clearly, when you talk about economic development, which I believe, as you said, is spread throughout the three levels, that was rather brilliant because we did use, we did have an economic development director, I think, Councilmember Tarnay, you mentioned that. And, you know, when there was a council change, it was determined that we should cut some positions, but not because it wasn't functioning, not because we didn't need it. When, when we talk about economic development, it's everything from going out and trying to find those big businesses, like you said, and maybe, you know, check in on, you know, what the real estate developers are doing, to helping businesses, making sure that we have the right businesses here. You know, how can we, it's, it's really something that our city should have and we don't. And a lot of times, economic development is in conflict with community development. That's how it should be, right? That's, they're, they're two different, you know, there's tension from both sides and I don't mean personal tension, but they're important roles. And here we have a Chamber ready to take that on. So I don't like to make decisions based on people. I like to make decisions based on positions and programs. I have to say Jill kind of came up here and she, she, I'm making this decision partly on the person, I have to say. I mean, this is a different Chamber and you are showing us, look what we're gonna do. And as far as residents go, the new resident welcome package is, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. I mean, I worked on those welcome packages and it was incredible value. And it's one of those things that maybe there's not, how do you get that, how do you measure that return on investment? You know, there's not gonna be a spreadsheet that's gonna say, oh, well, maybe there is actually when people, if you put a coupon in and you can track it, sure, okay, we can track that. But it is a value added for our community. The relocation guide, a lot of these things directly impact our residents. So I would say that, give us back or give us back. I, I want to put the parking spaces down to two. I'm prepared to go up to at least level two in funding. But I would, I would say for accountability purposes, and I'm sure Jill and the Chamber would agree, that we want to put in some targeted dates for coming back to say, here's, you know, how the money's been spent and, and really to hold the Chamber and ourselves accountable. I'm excited. I think that the last thing I'll say is we, if we're, we can really rely, not rely on, but I, I believe it will be a partnership. It's one that we need with all the major sporting events coming, they are coming, we need help and I, we're, I'm gonna rely on, on your energy and intelligence and ability to connect the dots, so I'll be supporting this at some level.
Thank you, Council. Councilmember Tarnay?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. As, as I've discussed, as I've stated before, I've been on this committee, so I've worked with Jill and staff and really trying to target and give us the list of actual deliverables that, that, they're not just so, when, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Howard's distinction that we, as much as we are, are basing this budget on the person, it's important that there is a metric, that there are identifiable things that we want from Chamber. And so I'm comfortable with what's been listed. I think since Jill has taken over, we finally have defined, defined a slate of items that you're actually working on and that I've already seen things ticking away. I'm seeing the North Manhattan Stroll, things are happening on that end of town and all of those things are gonna spur development. They're gonna bring dollars back into the community. And I appreciate your distinction that the money isn't coming from residents, it really is coming from businesses. And this is a reinvestment of our business taxes. So I am comfortable with that approach to dealing with, with budgeting for this. I have your notes here. And then as far as the, just the, the economic development side of things, as I pointed out before, we don't have an economic development person on staff and that is something that most cities, including all of our sister beach cities, they all have it. So we're, we're the, and it's a lot more expensive than 100,000 or 85,000 or 75,000. So I think it's important for us to recognize that, that somebody has to be doing this work. And if the city isn't doing this work and we can build a public-private partnership to do it, then that's where we should invest those dollars. As far as rent for this space, you know, I appreciate that just because something's been done for a long time doesn't mean that we have to keep doing it, but this is the opportunity to really understand why we have the rent set so low and the importance of having a space that, that as you're working to help the, the city in growing its economic development, that you're accessible to all of us. Not only is it important for you to be able to come over here, but that we know where you are and that you're accessible to us and that we can pop in there and say, oh, this business has an issue or that resident has an issue or, or needs help. So I think it's an important, I think it's a good investment in, in having you where, having Chamber where we can access you as well. And, you know, parking is always a challenge, so I think a good compromise on that is, I think, going down to two and, you know, doing what the rest of our residents do, which is circle around until you find parking, is how we're gonna have to approach that.
And follow the rules.
Yeah. And so I, you know, I'm, because I have kids who have had to deal with internships and summer job program, I think that's a valuable asset, especially for, and also for businesses that are hiring on a short term. They're hiring just for, you know, the, the winter vacations or the summer vacations. They have, to have a dedicated source where they can list, hey, I need these positions filled and then have students, young adults who come home from college, be able to look in advance and just get those things in place. I think that's a value to businesses and these, again, I think are.
And the community.
And the community, absolutely. And the visitor map, I mean, the fact that we don't already have that, I think that, so for me, and I would be comfortable with level one, level, priority finding level two plus the 6,000 for visitor map and internship and summer program. So that, that would be what I would be comfortable with. So, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Shireen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I think what's important is that, you know, there, there's some obviously oversight of, of this and I don't know how that will eventually work out, but whether it's coming back to council or, you know, working with finance. You know, also analytics, you know, you talked about being able to quantify at some point what our return on investment might be. And I have no doubt, I mean, we budgeted 40,000, even at like a level two funding, you know, it's $35,000 more, but I have no doubt, you know, with what I've heard from the board and, you know, the energy I'm seeing and, and what you're gonna, what you're gonna go out there and do is gonna generate more than $35,000. So I, I feel comfortable with that, but it's not just $75,000. Realistically, looking at the market rent, you know, it is an in-kind service of 40, 45, $50,000, whatever the number might be. So I, I, you know, I, I don't want to mess with the rent. I, I think it's, you know, what our city attorney said, it's providing a, a public benefit. So I understand that, but I just, you know, for the record, it's, if we go with level two, it's, it's really not just 75,000, but it's 75,000 plus thing kind of, of rents. And as far as the parking spaces, I, I agree with my, my colleagues, I think going down from four to two, and I heard what the mayor said of the older adults, you know, it could help maybe benefit them, although a little bit further from Jocelyn, but I think it could benefit them. So I'm, I, I would like to support level two and this is, we're doing this kind of mid-year, there's only seven more months until June 30th, so we'd love to kind of see some, I'd like to see some analytics like in the spring or something like that before we make a decision on our, on our next budget. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Councilmember, I see, Mayor Potem.
Yes, thank you. And I'll be brief. Everything that everybody said is absolutely true. You know, the, the chamber does bring a lot of business in. So, I'm just going to go ahead and tell you what I support. First of all, in terms of the value that they, that you bring in, I kind of attribute some of that to sweat equity. I mean, you're, you're working hard, and you're bringing in probably more business than you're being paid for. But that's what we'll, we'll hope to improve. But what I propose is that level-two funding, try to find sponsorships for the level-three. I think, you know, you've got enough big corporations, and these are their goals as well. Whoops, internships, and, you know, visitor map to bring people to town, and see where everything is, and economic development. So, I think you could, you could put a package together that the membership, the 190 members or 286 membership can go ahead and help with that. I propose on the lease that, is, make it a three-year lease for right now, you know, at the same rate. Do you actually pay eight cents a month? Do you write a check for eight cents a month, you know, for that? But, but let's, let's put a, you know, a time amount to that. So, three years, so we can come back, so they got some security, and then we can come back and kind of look at it and revisit it. The two cars, I kind of joked here, and I wrote down, auction off those parking spaces. Maybe they'll make up the money for you. But in any case, that would be a show of goodwill to the, to the Jocelyn Center, which, you know, a lot of those people are, you know, contributing to the economy here. So, that's what I would propose.
For my comments, I start by saying, I support our chamber. I've been a member of the chamber, no longer, but I was a member, and for 10, 15 years, I've been the council, I bet you can. I've been the council delegate to the chamber over several prior terms. And I've seen how it helps our business community. I've seen it serve, and more particularly, I want the current leadership to succeed. What we've heard from the board, as well as from the executive director, partnership, working with our city staff, doing tasks that our city staff have been unable to do. I like the expression of, what was it? It was one team. We are one team working together, and I appreciate that. But I am one who's been here before, along with my colleagues, and I have to bring some skepticism. I do recall some of the mixed success that our city had with its prior sponsorships of the chamber, as well as bringing in-house an economic development manager, based on how much was spent of taxpayer dollars versus just rough estimates of magnitude, even though we could not measure it in a scientific way, of the tax revenue that we returned as a result of the initiatives, as well as that person's labor. But nonetheless, I appreciate some of the initiatives that are being proposed, but I sure would like to have some more analytics, as been mentioned. I see that there is a motion that is about to be proposed, but I know I'm absolutely comfortable with the proposal of the level-one, with the $40,000. It is some, these are services which we know we could benefit from as a community, and we want to support our business community. But I am questioning some of the specific items in level-two and level-three. I want more analytics. I want a better description about what these services actually are, but I'm willing to give the benefit of the doubt for a short period, to try and see, let the leadership get their team in place, and perhaps be in a better position to provide that data to us, for a limited term. With the lease, I do share some of the concerns that have been expressed, Mayor Potem. I'm not sure if I want an open-ended lease. I think there needs to be a fixed term. I appreciate, I think, the growing consensus of two spaces, like many other businesses, where not all employees have parking spaces for them close to downtown. It's a perpetual problem. So, right now, let me stop my comments and hear what a proposed motion is to move this item forward. I see a motion has been made by Councilmember Tarnay, and what is that motion?
Okay, thank you. Just in, taking into account what my colleagues have all expressed, I would move to provide direction on the funding level of level-two for 75, for an additional $35,000. So, incorporating that to the already funded $40,000. Adoption of Resolution 25-0131, approving fiscal year 25-26 work plan agreement. Direct staff on lease payment preference of the continuing that $1 a year to enter into a new five-year lease. And then, reducing the dedicated parking spaces from four to two. And then authorize the city manager to finalize and execute agreement and lease, and then receive and file fiscal year 24-25 work plan report.
Okay, so, I have, and I see that's been seconded by Councilmember Shreer. So, I guess my question would be, in terms of the timing, if we're talking about level-two, because in this year's fiscal year budget, we've only allocated the $40,000. So, the proposal would be for the $35,000 supplement to come back when?
It's included, I believe it's included, we're allocating it now, we're saying-
This would be till June 30th.
Till June 30th.
We would get some analytics before we make a decision on next year's budget.
So, let me hear, I think the city manager wanted to clarify-
To clarify, if that is appropriated, if that's the motion that moves forward this evening, we will incorporate that into our mid-year budget.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
And what I heard from Councilmember Shreer is important for me, and particularly in explaining this to members of the community that might have questions. And that is, we're expecting, if we were to go forward with this level-two funding, that there'd be more analytics, more data to describe, better description, fuller description about what these initiatives include, right? Is that consistent with your motion?
Sure.
Mayor, if I may just clarify. So, that would be direction to the chamber as a part of the semi-annual reporting that's already included in our agreement, that they would include analytics.
That would be my friendly amendment.
Accepted. Thank you.
All right. Any other councilmember comments?
Call for the question.
Call for, do you want to make any comments? Call, we have people ready for the vote. Call for the vote.
Oh, I wanted to call for the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Hey, don't go, we have more.
There's more. There's more fun to be had.
Where are you going?
Okay, so, do we now move on to, actually, before we get to item number 13, can we take a short, short break before we bring it on?
You're the mayor, man. You're the mayor.
Stand in recess for a short break.
Amy here.
Okay, so we go like?
We're pun- I'm hunching.
All right, thank you very much. We've turned from recess and we now move on to item number thirteen, and I need my glasses, which is what I'm looking for. Just a moment.
See if you have these, you could.
I know, right?
Move on to item number thirteen, which is consideration of one-year pilot program with Film LA to facilitate the city's film permitting process and on-up to adaptation, adoption, excuse me, of a new film permit fee structure.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Lesser, members of City Council, Mark Lehman, York Parks and Recreation Director, and Linda Robb, our Senior Management Analyst, will be presenting this item. So I'll turn it over to Linda.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Linda Robb, Senior Management Analyst with the Parks and Recreation Department. The item before you tonight is a proposal for a one-year pilot program with Film LA to streamline the city's film permitting process and to adopt a revised fee structure. The purpose of this item is to improve efficiency and customer service in film permitting by partnering with Film LA, the region's centralized film permitting agency. Staff is recommending that the City Council approve a one-year pilot program with Film LA and adopt a new film permit fee structure that's better aligned with cities that currently work with Film LA. Currently, film permitting administration is handled in-house by Parks and Recreation staff. The department's administrative analyst serves as the primary point of contact coordinating with multiple departments, including police, fire, code enforcement, and traffic, as well as LA County beaches and harbors for beach filming. And Film LA currently issues all permits for our beaches because it's LA County. Each permit can take anywhere from three to thirteen hours, depending on complexity, resulting in roughly 160 hours of staff time annually. Student film permits, while valuable for the community, require even more staff oversight and generate no revenue. So why partner with Film LA? Film LA would provide an online, one-stop permitting portal, standardized safety and community notification procedures, and handle onsite monitoring during filming. Film LA collects all necessary documentation, coordinates with city departments, and remits city fees directly back to the city each month. By outsourcing the administrative function, we free up approximately 160 staff hours, the equivalent of about $16,760 in workload, which can be redirected to special event management, budget analysis, and other high-priority projects. It's important to note that the city will retain the right to deny any film permit and must provide final approval before a permit is issued by Film LA. Film LA does not charge the city for these services. So as part of the pilot, Film LA recommends the city reduce daily filming rates to remain competitive within the region. Currently, daily rates are $1,500 for minor-impact film shoots and $2,500 for major-impact shoots. Under the proposed structure, rates would vary by location. For example, $750 for residential filming, $950 in parks, and $1,215 for the ocean strand or downtown areas. If film vol- if film volume remains constant, the city would see a decrease of about $19,500 in daily film revenue, film fee revenue. However, staff anticipates that the streamlined process and Film LA's regional reach will attract additional productions to Manhattan Beach, helping to offset this reduction. Staff has met with both the Downtown Manhattan Beach Business and Professionals Association and the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce to discuss this proposal, as it may have implications for the business community in terms of parking, right-of-way access, amongst other things. The Chamber emphasized the value of a faster streamlined process, noting that some productions have been lost due to the city permitting lead time. Downtown Business Association expressed interest in ensuring that filming activity balances business access with community impacts, while also encouraging production companies to use local vendors. Both groups support moving forward with a one-year pilot program. If approved, staff will execute the Film LA agreement and initiate the one-year pilot program to begin January 1st, 2026. Throughout the year, staff will monitor film activity levels, community feedback, city department feedback, and fiscal impacts, and return to City Council with full evaluation and recommendation on whether to continue the partnership long-term. In conclusion, partnering with Film LA will modernize our film permitting process, improve customer service, and strengthen Manhattan Beach's visibility within the regional film industry. Staff recommends approval of the one-year pilot program with Film LA and adoption of the revised fee structure. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Donna Washington, Vice President of Operations and External Affairs, and Amy Kredelfer, Director of Integrated Communications, are available on Zoom as well.
Great. Thank you, Linda. Councilmember Sherrin, before I call on you, we have about 12 minutes before our meeting automatically shuts down unless we pass a motion to extend. So I would propose that we adopt that motion now so that we can't ask questions.
So move.
But we're still going to be motivated to end it in a timely manner.
So move.
I see a motion by Councilmember Howard, second by Councilmember Tarnay. We'll call for the vote.
I was trying to, you know, cut the time. Okay, so let's move.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Councilmember Sherrillian.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, as a former finance employee, I'm very familiar with this program. And, you know, my compliments for Linda and Jeanette taking it on, I think it was about five years ago. So compliments to all the hard work. There's so much that goes into these permits. It's not outlined here. It wasn't in the PowerPoint. But, you know, you're checking so much to make sure the residents, it doesn't impact the residents. And Linda and her team have done such a great job on this. As far as the fees, I guess, I under- I heard you through the presentation, you know, we've had these fees in place probably 10, 15 years. And I guess I was hearing, my question is, is it going to hinder film, like, people wanting to film here? Is that what Film LA is saying because of our fees? Our fees have always been high because it's a high-rent district, and cities that we compare ourselves to all the time at Bloom communities, their fees are higher in the sense of because rents are high, because you're actually renting a footprint. So I guess I'm concerned about lowering our fee and providing quality over quantity, which is, you bring in more filming. Part of why our fees were set that way were, you know, to kind of not minimize the impact on the residents. To lower the fee, more filming, and that's great, but you're going to, you know, be impacting the community. So I, that's just a comment isn't, you know, talk about the fee structure. If you can, I don't know if this is question time or comment time.
It's a great question. I have something similar. Please.
So Film LA did recommend that we lower our fees to come more in line with the cities that they represent. There are other cities that do have higher fees. Hermosa Beach is one, two are south. They also have full-time dedicated staff, two full-time dedicated staff, dedicated only to special events and film permitting. So they, in the past, have elected not to go with Film LA to keep that all in-house. But we, the Film LA was reluctant to move forward with the pilot without us lowering our fees. And just to add, Newport Beach charges very low fees, and they're pretty comparable to us, although in Orange County and not in LA County.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
So I share the same concern about Councilmember Sherrin. I just wanted to confirm what I think you've just said, and that is, if our council decided that we wanted to have a higher fee, could we no longer qualify for the one-year pilot?
Film LA did ask us to lower our fees in order to participate in their program.
And how did they arrive at the fee?
So they did not arrive at the fee. We arrived at the fees. So we might have some wiggle room in those fees. But the fees at the previous level were too high. They thought were too high to attract more. Because Film LA's purpose is to promote filming. And that's not to say that we would be bombarded with filming, because we're a very specialized community. Not every show and film needs to film at the beach.
Linda, you indicate this is a one-year pilot, and staff would be returning to council with the results of that. I wanted to make sure that one metric is explored, and that is the impact on residents. Because I imagine many residents might like things just the way they are. And granted, there's, having grown up in a family that was involved in the entertainment business, I can say, you know, Hollywood, wonderful. But for many, and moreover, this industry is declining in our region, so we want to promote it. But on the other hand, particularly for those living in our residential areas, they may not be so thrilled with the idea of more production. So that would be something I'd want more data on, I know myself. Thank you. Councilmember Tarnay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one quick question. So if we were to go ahead with this one-year pilot program and reduce the fee to whatever we end up reducing it to, and say at the end of that one-year pilot program, we decide not to move forward with, do we then bump up our fees at that point? Would it be embedded? We would have, you know, an automatic trigger to go back up?
In terms of an automatic trigger, I think there, I'm looking to the city attorney to confirm, there could be a way to tie the reduction of the fees to the one-year pilot. Alternatively, we could come back with the results from the one-year pilot program, and at that time, council can direct us to raise the fees back up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend Franklin.
Yes, thank you. How many film opportunities do you think we've lost because of higher fees or?
I do not have specific information on why we've lost opportunities. We do have a fair, I mean, every year, there's a few that apply and then cancel for whatever reason it might be that, that our permitting process takes too long, or it's, I don't think that we've lost many due to the fees. I think it's more about the processing time.
And what could we do to speed up our processing time? I mean, what are they going to do that we don't do already? I mean?
The process is very detailed, and we have staff who are working other aspects of Parks and Rec as well. We don't have, unlike Hermosa Beach, we don't have staff dedicated solely to film permits. So our staff in Parks and Rec are serving their other Parks and Rec responsibilities in addition to the film permit process. So their time is spread out amongst film permits and other things as well.
Okay, all right. And so the hotel manager, the Westrift, mentioned that they, she estimates that they've lost business. I mean, on an order of magnitude, is it like one or two productions a year, or 100, or 50, or 20, or 10?
It would be, it would be closer to, you know, five or less, most likely, for that particular business. And like I said, I'm not sure why other productions have canceled. It's likely because of the permitting time. But there's also, you know, location companies will apply to many different cities at the same time, and whichever one can answer first, they might go with, and then they end up canceling.
Right.
And so in this way, this is where Film LA sort of shines, is because they handle many different locations. And so they can easily, production companies can easily coordinate.
So is it fair to say that we're more reactive? Somebody comes in and asks, are they're more proactive? They find and can sell Manhattan Beach?
Well, they do. If we wanted to, we could list our public facilities on their location website. So in that way, yes, they are proactive where we are reactive. We could also choose not to have our, if we didn't want to encourage too much filming, we could also choose not to have our public facilities on those websites. But private entities would be able to let them know that they are available as well, businesses, and so they could market them.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Sherrin.
Is that time or not for a second bite at the apple?
Sure. Okay. Again, we do have Donna Washington and Amy from Film LA on the line, who probably can answer some of these better.
So yeah, so I do hear what the mayor is saying, and I do have concerns with filming and promoting a level of filming that's going to impact residential areas. Again, I, compliments to you and Jeanette. It's a lot of detail, a lot of work. You guys double-cross the Ts and double-dot the Is, do a fantastic job. I just get nervous, I'm a little concerned and nervous about this actual program because of all the detail that goes on with somebody wanting to film in the middle of a block where there's street closures, and you got to adhere to, is the trash going to be picked up? How's, where are they going to park? And all the street sweeping, and all the other stuff that goes to public safety. And ultimately, somebody makes the decision. In this particular case, I would assume it's you or Mark, somebody signs the permit saying, okay, this footprint, you know, we've notified, you know, 500 radius or whatever you need to do. I'm concerned of giving this product an outsourced, and I'm sure Film LA does a great job. I've known Film LA for a long time, you know, and I'm sure they're using their 30-mile radius of cities and what the filming costs are. But our fees were there for a reason. They were a little higher than most, and part of that was, was it really out there to promote filming? It was if you want to film here, this is what it costs. And so I'd be supporting a higher fee, but I just, this program, to me, I just, I get concerned about outsourcing this program.
Councilmember Howard.
Yeah, thank you. Do we, so let's say we go.
You know, it's interesting, we actually have a councilwoman named Amy Howard, but right now it is her time to ask questions. But thank you to the caller.
Oh, sorry, Amy.
At least her name is also Amy as well, but Councilmember Howard.
All the best people. You're right. That's what it was. Okay, sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. We, so, so Film LA, so we wouldn't be paying for them. They're going to be doing this, this work that you guys would be doing, but they're able to, because of the scale and because they do it all the time and they have systems in place, they can process it faster. But are they, you worked with them, and I assume you gave them all the things we look for, like, in the, if it's in the middle of the block, you need X amount of, you know, police, you know, support, X amount of public work support. Did you put our standards into it, or did they say, no, it has to be?
So we have not gone into the granular details with them of our requirements, but that is what happens after we do the agreement.
Okay.
Is that every department that is involved, police, fire, will meet with Film LA to discuss the requirements. And then we see all the permits as they come through the portal and always have the final.
We always have the final say. So, and what I hear, though, is that, so, you know, if we sign, if we enter into a contract, then we're going to work with them to say, you know, here's what we require, here's our standards. Could it, in fact, not just free up some of your staff time, but also other departments? Because they're not constantly, you know, involved in this?
Yes, yes. I believe it will free up other departments' time, because if we find that we have filming in a very sensitive area, we can, you know, request that they have one of their staff onsite to monitor the filming.
Oh.
And, and, you know, deal with any concerns. They also have a 24/7 phone line that people can call.
So you don't have to get called in Brad Pitt. See, I'd want to get that call. But you do you, Linda, you do you. Okay, so, so we get the final say, you know, I think it's interesting that we don't have our own film permit person. So I think that's interesting. And it would be pilot program for a year, and so we're big on accountability and metrics. The mayor, you love that word, metrics, you really do.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry. I've learned a lot about that, and I think it's important. So I think it would be important to maybe come back to council and say, here, here's how we would determine if it impacted our residents too much. Like, right? Like, that's going to be, you know, how do you determine that? You know, is it two people that get angry? Like, two people who get angry can feel like 2,000, right? Like, you know, I don't know. Like, and let's see how many, you know, how many film shoots, commercial shoots, photo shoots are too many, right? How is that impact measured? I have, I have a comment for later, but thank you.
Councilmember Tarnay.
Mark, did you want to answer? I saw that.
I just wanted to add, we've worked with Film LA for quite some time, and we've really vetted them. We have a high expectation in terms of customer service. And I think with those multiple conversations, they've really impressed us with how they've handled other agencies, that high level of touch, again, that onsite coordinator, the 24/7 line. They also geo-tag each location, and so they won't overlap over a certain amount of time. And I know, you know, Donna and Amy can speak to that, but I do, I did want to share that, that we really have vetted them to make sure that they can provide this high level of service for the community.
Great. Councilmember Tarnay.
Thank you. This question's for Donna and Amy from Film LA. Can you share with us some of the challenges that the production companies have reported in, you know, their permitting process, and some of the hesitation that they've expressed in filming in the city of Manhattan Beach?
Hi, good evening. This is Amy speaking. So I can't say specifically that we've heard, I mean, we, it's not that we're hearing an onslaught of negative feedback about Manhattan Beach, but what we are seeing is that there has been this constriction of filming. Obviously, we've seen this through the region, through the state. And we are hearing from filmmakers, as so much production has fled California and has gone to states with more lucrative tax incentives, it's all about, it's all about where they can get the best deal. And we are left with, a lot of those big features have left, so we're left with a lot of these smaller productions. And what we're hearing from filmmakers is that it's just really cost-prohibitive to shoot in locations that have some of these fees that are high and that charge per day. So we're hearing that. We're hearing turnaround times. You know, the TV industry moves very quick. It's an agile industry. They, they only have a short amount of time, so they need to have that turnaround time. And in less than, you know, three to five days, that's sort of the standard in the region. And in less than, you know, three to five days, that's sort of the standard in the region. And, you know, what we're seeing is just throughout this, this area, we're have, there's other jurisdictions who are trying to do things to bring production back, to really encourage that. Because of the economic impact that it has, we just saw this week Culver City passed a motion to, you know, to, to bring filming to the city to lower fees. So we're seeing across, you know, sort of the region and different municipalities, that overall people are, are trying to do things to lower fees. So that's why we made the suggestion that if Manhattan Beach was interested in promoting filming and would like to bring filming, more filming back to the city, that, you know, they might, you might want to try bringing some of those fees down just to see what, what you might get.
Thank you.
Next, I'll follow up on that. Thank you for that response. Help us think about perhaps having a higher fee and what that would mean to your ability to bring production here to Manhattan Beach, so that would be my first question. Talk to us about the range that you think still would be viable if we had interest in our council to use Film LA, but perhaps at a higher fee. And then the second piece is, to the extent that we're concerned about impacts on residences, I think there was the film Jerry Maguire that was filmed in Manhattan Beach in a narrow street, and thinking about that today and what the reaction would be of neighbors, some would be thrilled, maybe some would be less so. I'm just wondering, what protections do you think Film LA adds to the equation in terms of protecting those that may not be thrilled with productions?
I would, I would love to talk about the work that we do in communities. So we have a dedicated community outreach staff, so two people, and, and that is, that's their whole job. They work in communities, they work with, they meet with homeowners' associations, neighborhood councils, and business improvement districts. Their job is to really be proactive. They're out there to learn what are the areas that, that get frequent filming. They go out, and when they see that something is starting to become frequent, they speak to homeowners and they try to mitigate those issues. They try to really work to see what can be done to balance the needs of these communities with the productions. So if it's a matter of bringing down the amount of parking that they're asking, restricting the hours, making sure that allowances are made for, you know, different residents and the needs that they have, these are all things that we do. As Mark mentioned, we do have a 24, we're available 24/7 to take calls from communities. So that is something that we, we address immediately. We handle all of the incoming concerns, and we, we work directly with productions to try to solve those. We do provide notification services, so rather than, a lot of cities will require notification, but they leave it up to the production company to do that themselves. And as we know, you know, some productions are really good about that, and, and they hit everybody, and it's professional in uniform and others not so much. With us, we have a standard notification service. Our staff goes out, they're in uniform, head to toe, and they are walking in a 500-foot radius around every film location and making sure that everybody is, is aware in plenty of time and has a chance to, to call us and let us mitigate those concerns.
Thank you. And the question about the fees?
So in regards to fees, you know, in terms of a range, it's hard for me to give you exactly what, what you should or shouldn't be filming. I think what we've seen across the board is that when you get into over $1,000 a day to shoot in a location that's private property, so we're talking about this is somebody's residential home, they're already paying that homeowner to film there, they may already be paying the business to film there. If they're on top of that, having to pay a daily fee to the city that's in the thousands, that's when it really gets cost prohibitive. So, I, yeah.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pretem Franklin.
Yes, thank you. How, how does Film LA get paid?
So we collect a non-refundable application fee from every film permit. It's $931 for film shoots, and we collect a $52 for still photography shoots. Students pay a very small fee and nonprofits as well, as far as an application fee. So it's a one-time application fee, and that's it.
Okay, and then the daily fee comes to us, comes to the city?
Correct. We collect all fees on behalf of the city. We are guaranteeing payment for you. So if we don't get paid, we still pay you. So it, it, that's, it's our guarantee.
Okay, got it.
Great. Okay, good. Mayor Pretem.
Yep.
Councilmember Shurian.
Thank you. Maybe I've lost my train of thought, but I guess what, so it's, it's $950, you get the, you get that as your, as your cost, and, and then we're tacking on whatever we're gonna do daily, whether it's another $900. Doesn't that already become cost prohibitive in a sense?
I, I did want to mention, and I should have said this before, our $931, it's good for up to five locations in any of the jurisdictions that we serve. So typically, you're gonna have filming, they're gonna be filming in the city of LA, they can now add a Manhattan Beach location onto that same permit. It's the one fee for $931, five locations over seven days of filming.
Great, thank you. And this is just a comment for my colleagues, and, you know, this is not a huge revenue generator. It might impact the community, it might impact the businesses coming in and them generating some more money, we get some more business tax dollars. But what's our goal here? Is, is it to promote filming for a small dollar figure every year? And, or to, to protect our residents from, I, I'm very, I, I understand this program very well. I helped stand it up years ago, and it, it is a very complex, you know, and I remember the Jerry Maguire shot, it was on Marine and Blanch, and very tight quarters, and they had to go through a lot of hoops to get, make sure the residents went through that. And we've done other motion pictures, but every time we've done it, it just impacts the community. So what's our goal? It's more of a comment question for, for us. Is it to promote filming, to get some more tax dollars from businesses, or people to stay in our hotels? Or generate some minimal dollars for the maximum impact on our quality of life for our residents?
Thank you. Without any further questions or comments by council, I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Any members of the remaining audience in chambers care to address this item?
Good evening, Council Jill Lampkin, Chamber of Commerce. I want to point out kind of the flip side, so not the, the residential disruptions. And, and by the way, the thing that I was most impressed with in our meeting when Kelly and I met with Linda and, and this group, was that they allow you to customize what you want to do. And so, because of course, like, our initial reaction was, we don't have any extra parking for any, you know, filming in vehicles. And they were like, well, then you would say, we want parking off-site, and you can't park in this business district. And then you can require catering has to come from your local restaurants, and all of those things. So the things that you're saying about protecting residents, I totally understand, and I think you can write those safeguards in. But we do have a lot of opportunities for things like Manhattan Village and West Drift, where there are, there's, it's not the, the public, you know, I mean, it's not going to impact our residents, but it is very positively impacting a business. And so I just want to make sure that we're considering both sides of that equation. I was very impressed with how flexible they were and how willing they were to create restrictions that made us feel comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public in the chambers? Seeing none, Martha, anybody on Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
Thank you. Close public comment, turn it over to council. Councilmember Howard.
Yeah, I appreciate your, your question, Councilmember Shurian. And I think we're doing this, why are we doing this? I think that we're actually doing this because having professionals like Film LA do this is actually going to make this a better process for our city, for the residents, for our staff. And so I, I don't think you're, it's, and, and the representative, I believe, from Film LA talked about, you know, a lot of, most big productions are not being done in California anymore, certainly not Los Angeles. And so the fee reduction, which I, you know, is concerning, because, you know, we don't want to decrease revenues, but the fee reduction could make it so that more smaller productions could do their thing. And we're talking smaller productions that have less impact. And perhaps they are at West Drift, or perhaps they are at the mall. We're talking, you know, think about your streaming services, think about, there's, there's so many different productions that go on on any given day, and they're small, they're tiny. And remember, it's photo shoots as well, right? So I actually think this is value additive for our residents, because I think they will, they can determine the issues more quickly, you know, than our staff, who, who is wonderful. And it's like, you, I, I appreciate so much, Councilmember Shurian, you know, you know what goes into all of this. It's so many things, and it's so many things, it's really cumbersome on staff. So I, I don't see, it's not quite the moneymaker, I think it's streamlining it, it's making it better for our staff. When we, some of us went to contract cities back in August, and I believe there was a panel, right, with, there were some filmmakers there, and I think there was a member from, or a representative from Film LA. And to Councilmember Shurian's point, filmmakers, whether it's small or large, choose locations for a variety of different reasons. They're not gonna choose Manhattan Beach when they need a fall, you know, Midwestern scene. They're not, you know, sometimes they, you know, a small shoot, even a photo shoot, you can't use our downtown because the benches are nailed in, you know, are welded into the cement, so you can't move them out of a shot when you need to do things. There's a million different things that go into this, and they know, they, they live and breathe it. So I see this as something that makes more time for staff to serve our residents, and I think it gives us more safeguards for our residents. And I also think, there's a lot, we talked about internships earlier, you know, I have two, I kind of was a college student, so they're 28 and 30, who, you know, are trying, are, you know, in, trying to be in the film industry or different. How many, I'd like to keep these people employed. That's not our job, it's not our job, except, you know, economic vitality is sort of a function of a council, and how many of our kids could work on some of these productions? So I think it's a boon for, for us. So I would like to support this, and I'm comfortable with the fee, because I think there's an intentionality there that I support.
Thank you. Councilmember Trining.
Thank you. And I appreciate, just to echo what Councilmember Howard said, I appreciate the perspective that Councilmember Shurian brought up regarding, what is our objective? What is, what is our goal in, with respect to filming? And I was at the same conference, and they did have a panel of industry people who really shared with us the challenges, their, you know, films aren't being made, we're, you know, we're Hollywood adjacent, and we're supposed to be the birthplace of the film industry, yet so many of the films are now being filmed elsewhere and in other countries. So, you know, if we want to be a part of the solution, I think we have to think a little bit outside of our bubble and not say, oh yeah, we want films to be made in the US, but not in our city, right? So there's, like, not to be so protectionist that we really prevent, you know, all filming. And, and, you know, Jerry Maguire, there have been a number of films, I mean, if my husband was here, he would tell you all the films, because he has that information in his head.
Wade's, remember Wade's, the television show?
Yes, lots of, and, and was, uh, The Wolf of Wall Street also? Or is that just based on somebody? But, but my point is, I think also as a community, it is also nice when we can look back to films, and when we can talk about films and be a part of the production of movies and TV, and be a part of the industry. Having said all of that, we do live in a small community, and our streets are difficult, and parking is difficult. What I do know about productions is, they spend a lot of money in making sure that there are no disruptions, right? Because if they don't plan and their production, their shoot days are disrupted, it is way more costlier to them than it is inconvenient for us. So I do know that they give a lot of thought, and they do a lot of planning, and having a service where all of those factors, I appreciate that staff does a lot, has been doing a lot of this, but to have somebody who, this is what you do for a living, this is what you're, you specialize in, you have the resources, the ability, and the foresight, because you've been doing all of this, to really plan, unlike, and, and our staff has done a tremendous job doing it, but I think it really gives the, 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 the people who work in the industry to do it better, I would say, because they're specialists at it. And so, and, and, you know, I think metrics are important. How do we know how to compare this to unless we try it? And that's, you know, that's the one thing about the one-year pilot program, and I'm supportive of it at this point, is because I do, we don't have anything to compare it to. We don't have a metric. And so if, if we do the one-year program, we're given an opportunity to say, okay, if we want to be a part of this process, is this worth it to us? And, and we have a gauge, we have something where we can compare it to what we've had in the past. And so, see, those are my general thoughts, I want to make sure I'm not missing anything. Oh, and then also, ultimately, we have control. We have control of the final say on permitting. If we, if our city decides, oh, this is too much, or we don't want this, we can say, okay, this has been really great, the year isn't up, but six months into it, it's a pain. We can deny future permits. And so I think there is a safeguard that protects our city and that we still have the ultimate say in what goes on. And, and to Jill's point of the filming is, it's in, it could be in a number of different locations, we're just envisioning it being the most restrictive and inconvenient location. But this is an opportunity for filming to come in in other areas that may not be so inconvenient and restrictive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shurian.
Thank you. You know, again, I'm gonna, my fallback's gonna be that we are stewards to our residents' quality of life. And even, you know, inviting more filming here in addition to the construction, the capital projects, the street projects that we have going on, and the parking impacts, I feel it's, it's not worth it. And even the small productions, they're worse than the big productions, because they don't have money and resources. So to say that, oh, small, you know, companies will come in here, that's, that's not a good enough reason to outsource this. And yes, maybe, you know, Film LA, they're subject matter experts at filming, but we're subject matter experts at quality of life in our small community. And I've heard that over and over when I was running, and I'm gonna stand that, you know, I'm gonna be a no on this item, because it's, again, it's outsourcing another program. This will be our third program we've outsourced in the last 11 months, and where are we heading?
Thank you. Mayor Pretem Franklin.
Yes, thank you. So I had the, the pleasure of actually squiring around a film crew around the city with the, you know, and they're very nice people, they were very respectful. They constantly asked me if there's a way we could reduce the fees, to your point about the fees. But, you know, I was, I was kind of surprised, because they had a production, you know, staging area, and they brought in their own food, their own catering, they brought in, you know, everything that they needed. The crew and the, everybody involved with it didn't stay one, one hotel night, because they're all local. You know, and that's, that's, the ideal here is trying to promote local business. I agree with Mr., you know, Councilmember Shurian, it did interfere. Our residents are so good natured, though, and it was just a lot of fun for them. You know, you're walking along the pier, and then, hey, that's, wow! And they, they were used as extras as well, they didn't mind them walking into a, into a shot. You know, our staff, you know, throughout the city, to, like, introduce them, really, you know, they were top-notch, professional. They, you know, they were very welcoming and the like. But now that I see the numbers, and that we're only like 20, how much, what was our gross in fees? $26,000? Help me out here, somebody? Oh, $24,000? Total approximate $24,000?
Fiscal 2025 revenue is $43,700.
Fiscal 2025 revenue is $43,700. That's on Slide 5.
Yeah, okay, thank you. But I agree, you know, there are many places that we were interfering with our residents' quiet enjoyment of their town, that they work so hard and pay so much to make so beautiful. That attracts this kind of thing. It's sort of this circle, right, this cycle. So, you know, I understand it is, you know, additional work for Parks and Recreation, but I just don't see the worth of it. I don't think, you know, and heaven forbid we got 10 of these going on, you know, or 20 of them going on, you know, like that. It's going to be a big interference, you know, with our resident, you know, heaven forbid it be, you know, so successful in terms of quantity, that it's going to hurt the quality of our life. So, very much enjoyed going through it, but I'm going to be a no.
So, it comes down to your mayor to ask some questions to better understand the protections, because I share the concerns of Councilmember Shurlian and Mayor Pretem Franklin. I've been around film sites before, and they can be disruptive, particularly for neighbors who've moved to Manhattan Beach because it is a residential neighborhood, because they moved here for serenity, to not be in the thick of it. So, I want to better understand, because I'm hearing value in some of the benefits of Film LA, particularly with some of the supplemental staffing, some of the supplemental work that they do. I want to better understand, if we wanted to dip our toe for a trial basis, how, if anything, we could do so in a limited manner, keeping perhaps our fee a little higher, and ensuring that we have more protections for our residents. I wanted to better understand what those, that would look like. Can somebody articulate that? Maybe I'll start with you, Linda.
And so, as we stated before, we have complete control over any permits that we approve.
I'm so sorry.
You know, if we decide as a city that we want no more than...
Imagine if you were on a film set, sorry.
If we decide as a city that we want no more than 40 film permits, then that's what we decide. Currently, we have in the neighborhood of 40 a year. I don't know how many of those have, I, we have received two concerns from a resident in a residential area, and that's where we can have some control over, knowing exactly how many, you know, what's going on in that area, and limit the number of, you know, sheets in an area. But we have complete control over whether we approve or deny any film permit.
Let me clarify. We have a draft agreement in our packet, the Film LA Agreement. If we wanted to see, we spent more time on this than I was expecting, but to the extent that there is, I think, legitimate concern about how this might impact residents, if we wanted to see some of the specific limitations that we could add before we would approve this agreement, could we direct staff to come back with that information to how we could restrict this?
Yes, absolutely. I can work with Film LA to determine what limitations we can place.
Okay. Let me look to my colleagues. Would there be interest in that?
Sure. I mean, I hear the concerns, so if the colleagues that have concerns feel that would be helpful, then of course, I support that.
I think I, for one, would like to see what that might look like. And then the question is on fees, to address some of the current concerns that were expressed earlier, carry some higher fees. We're not looking to promote a huge number of film productions, but some of the benefits that Film LA has in other respects, I think, could be supplemental to staff time. So, any other council member comments? Do you need a motion, or just this direction to bring it back with these supplemental items?
Since the agreement was already going to carry forward our existing regulations, what more specific limitations are you interested in bringing forward?
I want to break down what those limitations are, otherwise I'm a no. I want to limitation, I want better understanding of what the current limitations are, what additional limitations we could add. We could limit it to a certain number of productions, perhaps we could limit it to a certain number of productions in an area of a certain radius. I welcome looking at what some additional restrictions might be. Councilmember Shurlian?
Thank you, mayor. Just one other thing if I can add. You know, there's a big impact on public safety as well, because our public safety ends up looking at the film permit location and saying, "Oh, we need two officers, two CSOs, or one fire engine, or there's a generator, we need to check the crossovers, or it's a fire marshal." Takes a lot of resources that was not identified in here, so.
I'd like more data on that. I'd like more information on what staffing is involved with this. That would help me decide to try the trial. So, would staff like direction or a motion?
Direction is sufficient.
Thank you. Any other council comments on this? Thank you. Let's move on to city council requests and reports, including AV 1234 reports, starting with future agenda items. There's not a separate delineated reference to future agenda items, so let me ask, do other council members have a future agenda?
Well, under item 15...
Yes. So, why don't we do this? First, other, item 14.
Oh, gotcha, sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's all right. Item number, I misspoke. Item number 14, city council AV 1234 reports? Any reports by council colleagues? If not, then we'll move on to item number 15, which is a consideration of a request by Councilmember Haworth and Councilmember Charnay to discuss an enforcement plan related to mobile vending businesses. I think we're just looking for a vote.
I'll be a third.
Third vote from Councilmember Shurlian. Do other council members have future agenda items? I have, I have one, and that would be, I would like to provide direction to staff to convene a public group that could provide thoughts on future Veterans Day ceremonies. We just had a really wonderful Veterans Day ceremony, but there are suggestions that I've received from members of the public, particularly veterans, who have thoughts for how we could market it better, include more programming.
I'll second that.
Second, thank you. And then the thought would be, just a full, full thought, is it would go to the Parks and Rec Commission, as these issues currently do, and then come to council. Thank you. All right. Out any further future agenda items? Madam City Manager, we have a report.
None this evening, thank you.
Miss City Attorney, do you have a report?
I could give you five movies that were filmed in Manhattan Beach, but I'll do that later.
All right.
No other report.
Informational items are on the agenda, in which case, we will be adjourning this meeting to a closed session on Monday, November 24, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers. We stand adjourned.